I'll show you. I'll show you where you find them.
Close to give it a second here to get Zoom up and running. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, March 19th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live and the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics for which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to be extended permitted by the open meeting law. We're to begin tonight with public comments from the board. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board? Oh, I need to acknowledge that Caesar Nizolo, Selectman Nizolo, is not with us this evening as... Oh, there we go. Look at that. I'll say he graduated, so congratulations on your road trip back. And so I do see Caesar is actually with us, so public comments from the board this evening.
Uh, not yet.
I will just, I was out at last week's meeting and I saw the broadcast, and I just wanted to comment on the Board of Assessors, what a great job they have done going through a very difficult period through a reevaluation and the amount of work and the amount of data that they have been able to achieve with the Assessment Department in Rena and the supporting staff and Vision. So I think it was really an incredible amount of energy focused in one area that has made a huge change from one year to the next, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
Thank you, Selectman Alonso.
I have nothing.
All right. And any public comments, Caesar, Selectman Nizolo?
No comments.
All right, and none for me. Any public comments from the public this evening? Yep.[185.12][185.12](laughter) Mary? And then we'll call on Ms. Deb Lincoln.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Mary Wilson. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and while I am on the formal agenda for later, there is one topic that I wanted to socialize with the town and with the Select Board. Once again, we're partnered with the Parks Commission to do an Earth Days event throughout the month of April. The official dates are the 30th of March through the 28th of April. We are still working with coordinators to finalize the project, so for members of the Select Board or, you know, residents of town and anybody that's interested in participating and sponsoring a project, we would welcome your input. You can contact me or call in Shapiro on the Parks Commission. And as a heads up, we already have volunteers who are advocating for a Town Center roadway cleanup and then also Town Beach Prospect Street cleanup. The Town Center cleanup, the volunteers were hoping for April 20th, and then for the Town Beach tentative for 4/13. I understand that in order to do those types of cleanups, we need to get Select Board approval. So I just wanted to ask, what do you need from us to be able to approve like a Town Center cleanup? And, oh, by the way, I have already talked to Chief Gamel, and he's very supportive of this as well.
Yeah, so let me, I'm turning to the Town Manager, because as a town entity, it's a little different, so I just want to clarify. What approvals are needed for this?
I would just say making sure all the proper safety precautions are if you're going to have people in the roadways, like we do for toll boats, I mean, making sure.
So the Police Department would be supporting us on this, so I think if we go under the Chief's advice, we would be in good standing?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
As a town entity, and my members or colleagues can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but town entities don't have to go through the formal process to...
Well, I think it's, Mr. Chair, I think it'd be best just to formalize it if you made a formal request via email about the dates, and we would just approve them.
Yep.
Okay, very, very good.
So it's official.
I'd be happy to do that once we get it formalized. Like I said, the dates are still, I think the dates are firm, it's just the times that are still under dialogue.
If Chief, if you can get Chief Gamel to write you something and forward his response.
Okay.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, just work with Annie, that, I mean, it's a pretty more detailed process for the public event, and I, you don't need to go through all that, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
And then we're going to be doing online signups that will be published in shortly via the Ledger and then via social media, so look for that, and of course, to the extent that you can help advocate for us, we'd really appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lincoln, Deb, Debbie.[382.44][382.44](laughter)
Hi, I'm Debbie Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. I would like to echo Selectman Alonso's thanks to the Board of Assessors, but in particular, as a member of the Council on Aging, I would like to thank Jack Rabbit for his excellent work. I deeply care about your getting to bed on time, so I didn't do this at the last meeting, but I would like to thank Mr. Rabbit, because the Council on Aging really doesn't know how to go out there and deal with all this business about changing ages and doing all the research that Mr. Rabbit did, and we are deeply, deeply grateful to him for suggesting these ways to help our seniors stay in their homes, get reduction in taxes, and I urge everyone to support this warrant article. We don't have a number yet, I don't think, but we will keep you informed. Please come out and vote for this. It's very, very important to lower this number from 70 to 60 and to help our seniors in any possible way we can. So again, thank you to the Board of Assessors, particularly Mr. Rabbit. We really appreciate all your good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lincoln. All right. Ah, Jack's here. Good. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Bingham. I live at 150 Peninsula Drive. I would just like to remind everyone that the Town Caucus is Monday, March 25th at 7:00 o'clock at the Lunenburg High School Auditorium. This is an important part of the election process for people running for elected town positions. I am hoping that the caucus runs for years to come. With that, I would like to also tell you I'm retiring after 41 years serving on the Town Committee that runs the caucus. I will also include that the other two members, John Fortune and Wendy Bertrand, will be giving up their positions. It has been an honor to serve with them. So if anyone is interested in being nominated for the Town Committee, come see me at the caucus next week. It's not a stressful job. It requires you one day of work and maybe an hour that day. So thank you for allowing me to serve the town in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. All right. Mr. Rabbit? And then we're going to call Mr. Tyler. And then we're going to call Mr. Tyler.
Thank you very much, Board of Selectmen. I would like to just talk very, I'll stay within my three minutes, otherwise I know I'll get thrown out and hollered at by my wife.
Not true.
So I'd like to talk to you about when we first took the position, we taught, we did a survey to see what could we do better? And at the top, by far at the top was communications and how can we commit better information to the public to help them make decisions? And Rena and I sat around and we said, you know, one of the groups to our, closest to our heart, and I believe yours as well, is the senior group. And we looked at what we could do, and essentially that's part of what's going on in terms of the 41(c) exemption changes. But I'd like to just point out that there are nine million Americans likely qualified for, this is AARP magazine, my favorite, that are qualified for property tax relief, but only 8%, only 8% of the, applied for help, and primarily it's because they just don't really know a lot about it, and they're nervous about it. So what we attempted to do was put together a conference that could help address those issues and offer them additional levels of help. Our conference is essentially on March the 21st, next Monday at 3:00 PM, and we have quite a lineup of various...
25th.
On the 25th at 3:00 PM, Tom? I'm sorry, I got to stay close to the mic. I remember that from the other night.
No, no, you said 21st, so...
They said the 21st?
Yeah, so 25th.
25th, March 25th, yes. Thank you. So anyway, we're going to have Rena get up there and explain all the exemptions and clauses, including some that's not well-known, is the deferral clause, and we're trying to work that out a little bit further. There's a deferral clause that means nobody has to lose their house or be thrown out of the house. You may lose it over a long period of time, but you, we're there to help. Come and see us, come in and talk to us, and let's see what we can do. So Rena will hit those particular pieces. After that, we have Margaret Scarsdale, our representative, come in, and she's going to talk to us about the, essentially, tweaking school funding, Unitil update, as well as assuring we continue to have cable access, along with two other topics. After that, we have two of our guests, Tom and Lou, thank you very much. You're going to be coming in and providing the town with an update with regard to the bill, okay, I didn't bring my glasses, but it's 143911, and essentially, that's the bill the you two put together for the town and brought forward, and the town, not unanimously, but agreed to support that, so you'll provide an update and more of an outline for more people that aren't aware of that. That's, that's moving along really well. After that, we'll look at basically the recommended changes to 41(c) and how people may be able to participate and what you can essentially expect to receive. And I know the last meeting, and I'm not really clear, but I think you kind of voted to put it on the warrant and to go to Level 3, and, but I'm not real, real clear about that. I don't know if you voted on that, Mr. Chairman?
I'm a, I'm a little confused on what exactly you're...
Okay, 41(c).
Yep.
Yeah, okay, and there were three options, four options, do nothing, one, reduce the age, secondly, reduce, increase the payout, and the last one was to do both together.
We, I think we voted on what was presented in front of us, which was increasing the age.
Okay, and so that was essentially to lower the age of eligibility, and so I'm not, I know there was some discussions, but that'll be great, and we'll share that with them, and we expect that's going to continue to, to help this big, almost 2,700 people in town are operating below the poverty level, and of which that, there's a really healthy number of seniors that I think will be able to benefit from that.
So the date again is March 25th at 3:00?
At 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM.
And where is it at?
It is in the Senior Center.
The Adult Activity Center?
Adult Activity, yeah, someday I'll go in, and where all my friends are for breakfast every so often. And then I'm going to talk about a website that's going to blow your socks off, and it'll capture everything. The purpose of this website is to essentially make sure that not only we capturing all the relevant material that were associated with the voters, but also to the work, the toolbox that we've also, is gathering, gathering all the laws, all the, anything you can imagine that we've ever done, such that the next members don't have to spend an inordinate amount of time learning about all this stuff. It's all going to be there. And then we'll open up, we'll have a Q&amp;A session with that. So we anticipate that it's going to be there, it's being advertised, and yeah, that will be it. So I hope you can attend, and, well, you two especially, and thank you very much, and really, we're just getting started. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rabbit.
Thank you. I lost it, but I'm sure I'll...
Mr. Tyler.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Bill Tyler, 5 Graham Street. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Franco for his service to the town on the Select Board. I'm going to miss you, but I'm sure we'll be spending some time together with the clock trying to get it, keep it running, but thank you for your, for your service to the town. I'm speaking this, this evening as a lifelong Lunenburg resident and also as a former member and Chair of the Lunenburg Cemetery Commission. I've been watching the recent Select Board meetings and the Cemetery Commission meetings and the public comments made concerning the management of the town cemeteries. The negativity of these comments, especially on social media, and the quoting of incorrect facts and regulations taken out of context do nothing to help the real issue. After six years on the Commission and three as Chair, I'm confident that I know how it's supposed to be managed. The issue that has and always will get in the way of a respectful and orderly relationship between the Cemetery Commission and the DPW is the Charter. Its convoluted and contradicting language, as it applies to the duties of the Cemetery Commission, has always been a source of friction and contentiousness since the Cemetery Department was moved under the umbrella of the DPW when it comes to the term "day-to-day care and maintenance." I have suggested to previous DPW directors that they need to work with the Commission to define in a written document what that term actually means, instead of the blurred lines that currently exist, which allow any number of meanings. Finally, I would suggest that instead of promoting all this negativity and the public calling out of elected officials, their time and effort would be better spent serving on the Board of Commission. All they're accomplishing now is deterring residents from volunteering to serve the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Do we have any other public comments this evening on Zoom or otherwise? Okay, communications from other boards, from the Water District. For those with scheduled appointments, we will get to them, we're just going to be a little, a little late coming to them.
I will try to be brief. My name is Mark Birch. I'm Chairman of the Board of Water Commissioners, and I'm here to present the Superintendent's Update for March 19th. We're currently working, I only have, I believe, six items to go over, it'll be short. This is item number one, we're working on a PFAS master plan. For a brief overview, PFAS is the forever chemical that's in the environment, and it does not break down over time, and it's related to certain health issues with the public. Why, a couple of reasons why we're here at the PFAS master plan is the EPA proposed a national drinking water regulation for PFAS that would institute a maximum contamination level of .004 parts per trillion, basically a non-detect for public drinking water.
And by hypothetical...
By implementing this, the EPA seeks to reduce the exposures of these chemicals, which have been linked to serious health issues, including cancer, liver damage, reduced fertility, and developmental issues with children. PFAS has been found in all of the Lunenburg water wells, however, one well was over the maximum contamination level of 20 parts per trillion, and that's the Hickory Hills well. We've moved forward with the money that was allotted to us from the Selectmen through Opera Funding and met on March 18th yesterday and had a presentation of our master plan from Ty and Bond. The Commissioners are presently reviewing this plan, and we should be providing our feedback at our next meeting and hope to vote on this. The second item that we have, action item we have going on, is the Mass Ave Water Main replacement. This is on Mass Ave from Northfield to Cornell Drive. We've had numerous issues in that area. One of the problems is that's a dead-end main, so there's no way to loop water back in if there's a break from Northfield Road all the way to the Shirley Line and down to Hickory Hills. Along with this, we are going to be updating our billing. The district voted this project through, and we are going to need to fund this, and we will be sending something out with our, our next quarter bills to notify the public that an increase is coming for this project. Number four is we are currently working on our community outreach and engagement together with the assistance of Capital Strategic Solutions. We have implemented a per and polyfluoroalkali, so for those that want to know what PFAS stands for, webpage, lunenburgwater.com/pfas to educate consumers about PFAS. We've also increased our engagement with the community members through our Facebook page, and we have also established waterquality@lunenburg.net, an email address that will be sent out with a townwide mailer somewhere in the next week or so, assuming that that's when that's what's going to happen, regarding PFAS to every address within the town. We have started an e-subscriber list. The Lunenburg Water District has placed an e-subscriber registration on our website homepage to encourage the community to sign up for news updates from the district. We encourage all community members to register to receive valuable information regarding what's going on within the district. We have a number of dates coming up for special meetings for the community outreach. Most of those are in April, and these are the dates that we have that are coming up. We also do have our annual meeting coming up March 30th of this month. Nothing special on the agenda, all normal items, budget, and we will be re-electing or electing another Commissioner. So the dates, we are planning to try to reach out to departments, boards, and committees and have an open house to review the master plan. This is scheduled for April 4th, 1:00 PM at the Water District Office. We are looking to do outreach for the Hickory Hills community, all the residents, boards, there's a couple different boards down there, there's a large residential community down there, and that will be at the Water District Office on April 10th to review the master plan. We have a community-wide hybrid meeting scheduled at, for PFAS master plan at the high school, so everybody in the community is welcome. All of these meetings are public meetings. That would be April 25th at 6:30 PM, and we are looking to schedule a meeting for May 16th to vote to pass the master plan and funding for PFAS remediation. The meeting that we had with Ty and Bond yesterday should be on public access. They did a very good job explaining PFAS, what it is, the, our system, and, and the different ways they looked into mitigating it. That's all I have. I don't know if the Board has any specific questions. This, this update was emailed to the Town Manager for, for you all to review if you have any questions, and, as well as the schedule, and both will be posted on our various web Facebook pages.
So I know you had a lot to say here, but if I can just highlight three kind of major points, you're noting that there's a website that anyone can go to to get more information on PFAS, and Key, would you mind stating that website one more time?
So I believe there will be links on the regular Lunenburg Water website, but there's lunenburgwater.com/pfas, and we're also establishing waterquality@lunenburgwater.net, which will be sent out on a townwide mailer for people to try to get more information. And again, all of our meetings are on public access, as much of this information that we're gonna, that we have is on public, is going to be on public access, and we'll have links on Facebook as well.
So the website, there's an email address, you noted that residents can email, and the third thing was the, that there's an opportunity to sign up for subscription to get updates coming out of the Water District.
Correct. Yep, and that's on the e-subscriber list on lunenburgwater.com.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Of course.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Birch on behalf of you and the Water Commissioners and the Water District for coming forward with these things. These kind of updates are invaluable. The fact that you're on public access now is invaluable for, you know, there was this time when there was a black hole of information. If you didn't go there in person, you didn't know what was going on, and I think this is a world of change, that it's all positive, and I want to thank you and the Commissioners and everybody for making that possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here, and I think I also want to acknowledge your consultants that you've hired, I see them here with us, and the great work that they've done to kind of lay out a good way for community outreach, you know, this really is, I think, a good, as we're going into this, and as Mr. Alonso just noted, the updates you've provided, but also just the path that you've laid out, it's a really good model and a really good path.
Thank you.
So I just want to give some credit to that as well.
Thank you. I know there's a lot going on in town, and we have a pretty aggressive schedule. The aggressiveness of our schedule is due to the SRF funding that we've applied for and have, we've been approved for, and, you know, we're looking at 0% interest with principal forgiveness, and that's, that's huge, because right now, if we didn't have this, we'd be looking at, we called our bank the other day, it was 4.5%, and on the numbers we're looking, that's somewhere in the vicinity of around $12 million in interest. So that's a huge, huge savings going this way. We are, we are working on, everybody I know is concerned about finances, we are working on getting as much financial information as we can so we can lay this out to, to show, you know, the economic impact if we, if we don't take this aggressive route and try to be in front of this. So, thank you very much. Have a nice day.
All right. Any other communications from other boards? All right, we're going to go to our 7:05 appointment. This is for flammable storage license amendment for 998 Reservoir Road, PJ Keating, to update the existing tanks list of materials. If I may ask a representative, just come forward, please state your name, and then if you can give us an overview of what you are requesting and, and what our approval will do for you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Bremer. I am serving as the Assistant Environmental Compliance Manager for PJ Keating, and while I'm relatively new to the company, I am no stranger to this town whatsoever. I've lived here my entire life, grown up down the street, it's been a pleasure, and while I am here today as an observer, my colleague here will be the one doing most of the chitter-chatter, so thank you.
Jacob, did you graduate from Lunenburg High School?
I did.
Excellent.
Did, 2019.
Excellent. Sir?
Good evening. My name is David LaCombe. I'm the site manager for PJ Keating in Lunenburg. The, the storage that we are changing, we're not changing on site, we're asking, we're having 172,000 gallons of storage on site. You will note that the permit's been, quite an old permit, and when we put in the new storage tank of 30,000 gallons, the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services asked us to update our storage in terms of, they had it on their documentation that we had 172,000 gallons of gasoline on site. We said that's not correct. Over the years, we've had many changes from underground storage to other storage tanks and the types of materials that we do store on site. So we took this opportunity to provide you with some information of the volumes that we do store and what those quantities are and what those descriptions are. So not asking for any change in the volume that we store, we've just tried to be more transparent with the volumes of materials that we store on site, and as I said, the Massachusetts Department of Fire Service had asked us for that information.
For the public benefit, would you mind just reading through what you're storing and the quantities you're storing?
Sure.
And then afterwards, you know, if you wouldn't mind just explaining how they're protected, how they're secured?
That's a good question. We have cooling oil, we have maximum quantity of 667 gallons stored on site, we have dielectric fluid... fluid, 395 gallons, we have number two fuel oil, 21,838 gallons, we have gasoline, 1,000 gallons, we have hot oil, 1,075 gallons, hydraulic oil, 180 gallons, liquid asphalt, 120,000 gallons, motor oil, 500 gallons, transmission oil, 1,000 gallons, waste oil, 650 gallons, and future use of 24,695 gallons. And that would bring us up to 172,000 gallons.
And how are these secured and protected?
And, and forgive me, because I, I don't know all of those that are, most of those, those storage tanks are obviously in double skins with, you know, environmental protection around them so that you can't have the leaks, the, and, and sorry, I couldn't speak well enough to the, to the storage of those. I know of the gasoline, the double storage on those, I know the waste oil in terms of how they're treated and double storage and, and their ability, inability to, for spill and spill kits and those types of things, but I couldn't speak about the liquid, I'm sorry.
Any questions from the board?
One is, we have an email from the fire chief that he's okay with this.
Yep.
But I have a question, and I would ask him, but he's not here, and you are. So, do these get inspected by the fire department for fire codes every year?
I believe they do.
I believe they do too, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
No more questions.
Mr. Chair? Any other questions from any other member of the board? Okay, and just to recap, you had stated this at the beginning, but I'll, so the license dates to, as our note in the, from the fire chief notes, it dates to 1976, and it has been updated since. So we're doing, as you guys are going through your process, this is a, you know, just a kind of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and making sure that what you have on file with us better reflects kind of what you're doing and, and just again, updating the license. All right, if there are no remaining questions from the board, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the flammable storage license amendment for 998 Reservoir Road, PJ Keating's, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Could be a roll call, vote. Mr. Nuzolo.
Aye.
I butchered your last name there, Mr. Nuzolo.
It's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Imki.
Aye.
Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
An aye for myself. So license is approved, and I want to thank you for the work that you do for our community. I want to thank Jacob for being a resident here in Lunenburg and work, continuing to work here in Lunenburg as well. You guys are a really valuable part of our community, and we really, we, again, we value you guys being forthcoming, you know, the, the lack of any kind of issues that go on down there. You guys have been a good corporate partner.
It's good to hear. We, we like to keep abreast with our community, and we're well within the community, so we enjoy being part, and we're looking forward to being in the future.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, we're gonna go to our 7:15, and I'm gonna turn to the Chair of the Cemetery Commission to begin her meeting and to lead us into what we are doing here tonight.
Do you want me up there?
Nope, there's fine, just be sure to hit your microphone.
It's on.
Okay, they're both on? I see them. All right.
Okay. Can you hear me? So the Cemetery Commission opens their meeting jointly with a select board on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024.
Okay, you don't need to read all the other stuff.
Right. And then, so we're basically with this joint appointment, what we're trying to do is, again, is have the appointment hearing of Michael Clark.
All right. So typically when we have these joint appointments, as per the charter, when we appoint into an elected vacancy, it is a double, a joint appointment by the remaining members of the existing board and also by the select board. So we'll start, if you wouldn't mind just kind of laying out a little history, have you met with the applicant? If so, you know, how did that go? And then we'll turn to this board for any, or, and if you have any questions, if you want to ask them of the applicant at this time, and then I'll, we'll switch over to the select board, and we'll ask the applicant questions if we have any.
Okay. I think we did have Michael. He came to one of our meetings last week, and he gave us a well, wealth of information. He, professionally, he's been employed for over 40 years, and he is a manager, he's an engineering manager. He has been involved in Lunenburg from day one with the youth soccer, the school health advisory council, the school committee, and also the Boy Scouts. And I want to just point out with the Boy Scouts, as the Boy Scouts to us have meant so much, especially at the cemetery, because of what they've done at the cemetery to redo those stones that are so old and, and historically tried to write them, put the right kind of loving touch that the Boy Scouts do. And we felt very honored that they picked us as far as to try to help us in, in that project. He's been an adult leader for the Boy Scouts for over 12 years, and he is, he has certification on the youth protection program and is involved in many organizations, and I think he'll be well-served for the Cemetery Commission. And we are looking forward, hopefully, that you will also vote for him to step on with us.
All right, thank you for that, Nancy. And to this board, I'll just turn to any, all the board, we don't have to go in order, but are there any questions or comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of note that we usually hear from the applicant before we ask any questions, if he would be so willing.
You can stay there, Mr. Clark.
There's a microphone there, Mike, if you want, or you can come up. All right.
Do you want to give us an overview of why you're interested in this role?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. It was interesting to, to see Jacob Bremer here. He, he's also an Eagle Scout out of Lunenburg, Troop 1728, and he helped my son out tremendously on his Eagle project, my son Mike in the North Cemetery doing the apron around the flagpole and the military flag tribute. So it's, it's always good to see, see them back in the community. And, yeah, he, he did a lot of work too, and it's key when you're doing these Eagle projects, not just to be the scout, working on it for their badge and coordinating it, but to have these other scouts show up. And Jacob was always there, so. But anyways, yeah, I've been in Lunenburg since we moved here in 1992, my wife and I, my daughter, five years old, she was expecting my second daughter. So two more kids in, through the Lunenburg school systems, all graduates of Lunenburg High, and, and they're on and off doing good things, thanks to the, the town in part, a lot of good people. With, with the Scouts, we've done a, a number of projects in the cemetery, and, and that's a good part of my interest. I'm also Chair of the Lunenburg Republican Town Committee. I met Lance May there, we had a good working relationship on Mike's Eagle project, I met Bill Tyler. I know Todd Holman was great with the Scouts. So I, I think it's a good fit. I, I was on the school committee for three years, I know the, the scope and breadth of, of that type of committee position. So I think this is a good fit right now for me, and so I'm interested in, in serving on the board and serving the town with various experiences. I'm, I'm used to policies and procedures. You know, I went to school committee training up Whittier Vocational Tech, I think, up around past April, so I did that, you know, because that was a, that was a recommended obligation to go through. Being in the Republican Town Committee, I thought that was kind of a casual group, and, and then I was asked to chair it when the Chair moved out of town, and worked with Lance, and he introduced me to the Mass General Laws that, that govern everything, and I realized, okay, there's, that this is a serious part of this. And, you know, I, I diligently went through that, the Office of Campaign Finance and all, and so I'm, I'm accustomed to what it takes to comply with state rules and regulations too. And I, I was the treasurer of my wife's campaign for state rep, so more repertoire with, with the state, and, you know, I always found, they're, they're very helpful, they always want to answer your questions, they want, they want you to contact them ahead of time through the right channels, and, and they're on your side. So, so that, that's probably the scope of my background, and I think this is a good, a good position for me right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. If you wouldn't, you can stand or you can sit, but I'll turn to the board for any questions or comments the board may have. We'll start with Selectman Nuzolo, who's on Zoom, and I apologize, Susan.
That's fine. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you.
First, I want to thank you for volunteering. And just to clarify and confirm, I see that the term expires at the next annual election. I assume you will be running, considering the election is, what, two months away?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. I, I plan on attending the town caucus and hopefully being nominated and, and getting the position.
Okay.
Or on the ballot, right? Caucus is to get your name on the ballot, okay.
That was my question, but otherwise, I mean, Mr. Clark, I've known Mr. Clark a long time, obviously, a lot of different levels of service to the town, so he's, as he says, he's, it would be an excellent candidate for the position, so I support it.
Yeah, you obviously have, thank you, number one, I will, I'll echo, thank you for stepping forward to do this. And this, some of this was a reiteration for me because I, I saw you, I stumbled into your presentation and interview with the Cemetery Commission, because I watch the Cemetery Commission meetings now.
I'm sure you do.
You never know what's gonna happen. So, so I already felt good about your stepping forward, and I, so thank you, and I support you as well.
All right, same here. So this is gonna be pretty quick, so we're gonna look for a motion, it'll be one motion, we'll, and, and second it, and then we will take, I'll collect the votes or I'll, I'll count the votes amongst your members as well. So is there a motion to?
I would move that we approve with the Cemetery Commission the appointment of Mike Clark of 275 Cross Road to the Cemetery Commission with his term to expire until the next annual election of May 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. This could be a roll call, vote, starting with Selectman Nuzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Imki.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And we're now, we're gonna go to Madam Chair.
Aye.
And Miss, and Dave, I'm blanking on your last name, Dave. Doran, that's right, Mr. Doran. All right, that is unanimous, congratulations, the motion passes, congratulations, Mr. Clark. The next steps will be to go to the town clerk, get sworn into the role. As noted, caucus is coming up on the 25th, and please be sure to be nominated, and we, and we, again, thank you for coming forward to the town. You know, I think this is a, really a great appointment for us and for our community, you know, I look forward to you being in this role. So thank you, Mike, for stepping up into this. Thank you. And then I will turn to you to adjourn your meeting.
Okay. Cemetery Commission adjourns the meeting at 20 minutes to 8:00 on the 19th of March, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You are adjourned, thank you. All right, and Mike, you're gonna get sworn in, right, so that you can be at the next meeting, and I'm sure Nancy's excited to get this role filled. All right. So we're gonna go now to our 7:30. This is a meeting with the Conservation Commission Chair regarding proposals including the use of consultations.
Consultants?
Consultants, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mary Wilson, again, Chair of the Conservation Commission, 138 Whiting Street. So I've been to the Select Board a couple of times now to make you aware of challenges we've been having in large part due to vacancies in the, in the office. Those are ongoing. We do currently have a full-time administrator that started in, I think, December, the end of November at the very least. We now have a vacancy and are looking for a part-time administrative assistant as well. Our new resource has been inundated with ongoing project load backlog from vacancies, roll down from previous resources, the new and ongoing workload. The office is behind, and we will continue, likely continue experiencing significant delays in processing the workflow for many months to come. This will adversely affect businesses and residents that are applying through the Conservation Commission for projects, to make you aware. We have been working with the town manager, and our administrators come up with some interim and long-term solutions, and I think we're, we've got a plan that's, at least, will start making some improvements, but it'll take a little bit of time to get there. So first and foremost is to identify and hire the part-time administrative assistant, and I think those interviews are ongoing, yeah.
And looks like we have a candidate to offer the position, too.
Oh, excellent. Yay. Second, adopt OpenGov software and workflow as soon as possible. This is a software application that is tailored to support online permitting with workflow management and document archival features. This will help, we expect this will help with the bandwidth for the clerical task and also with the technical bandwidth on application processing. Our administrator is doing an assessment right now to determine how long it will take for us to port over to OpenGov. We'll have to set up our forms there, and she will have to set up a workflow, so it'll take a little bit of time. I expect by the next time we meet that she will have that initial assessment, and then we'll, she's prioritizing her time right now, at least a couple hours a week, to get those documents ported over to this platform. Longer term, we expect that will enhance our throughput and efficiency in the office. But, you know, a little bit of a short-term sacrifice. We, we also need to start using our application fees to generate a budget for technical consultant resource, that's a technical consultant, that you just referred to, Mr. Chair. This, what we have estimated in terms of what we need for bringing in that expertise is 250 hours per year, that's five hours average per week. The current fee structure is expected to provide us 60 hours, so the Conservation Commission will also be reviewing our fees and considering whether we should increase those fees. My initial look at surrounding communities is that we're very inexpensive compared to our peers, so we'll be undertaking that as a project with a hope to provide at least some additional support towards that 250 consulting hour support. We also have within our current bylaws the ability to charge projects for consulting support, and I think, Heather, you said that we need to set up a revolving account in order to exercise that?
Correct.
Yeah.
I did submit an article by the deadline to, because I worked with town council on that, because after reviewing the bylaw and its reference to a revolving fund, which did not exist in our bylaw, revolving fund bylaw, we, he helped draft the amendment to that bylaw to include such.
So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So with, with those two measures, increasing the fee structure and hopefully being able to create that revolving fund, we hope to be able to bring in the consulting resources that we need in order to, you know, bring in the expertise that we need. We have a great resource right now that Julie and Heather identified and brought on board in December. That resource has been out of school for about a year and a half. And, you know, you may recall, two years ago, we had somebody with more than 20 years of experience, so we need to invest, continue investing in our younger resource, our junior staff resource, and helping them grow in their career, and in the interim, we need to hire the consultants to bring that expertise back into the office. And then ongoing support, the town manager, I, I know you have been working with, with Sophie, our administrative assistant, to identify other opportunities for training, and I do appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I know you're really busy, and there's not a land use director that would generally be the frontline manager for our office resource, so, you know, you've, you've met with us, and it's clear that you've met with our administrator a couple of times to try to figure out how to help and bridge the gap there. Again, there will be ongoing delay. Again, there will be ongoing delays because we're, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time to get ahead of things, and we'll be continuing to work with the town manager. Hopefully, we get a land use director soon that can also help us with continuing to improve the office efficiencies. But for the short term, there may be some noise about delays. Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments on the board?
I will say, my only comment would be, I think it's a reasonable and sensible plan, and I support that, what you outlined there.
Absolutely.
Especially the part about putting the effort into training somebody who's new to the staff, and then while we're doing that, bringing in consultants to bring in the experience. That, I think, is a very critical component of the plan for it to work.
I do have one question. I believe that kind of hybrid model is more common now than in the past, perhaps, in other towns. Is that?
I have heard that from the couple of friends that I have that are in this industry. I've only been able to identify one town that was doing it specifically in the Conservation Commission area, but several towns that were doing it in other functional areas.
Thank you, Mary, for bringing this to our attention. You know, I think that, you know, anything that improves workflow, especially digital software, keeps a good record. And I know that one of the hard things when you're coming into a job is what was done before me? And when it's a paperwork trail and a lot of records and handwriting, but when you have a software system that someone can go into and that keeps that record for you, that's just a better way to manage. And so I think that that's a really, you know, smart idea. It sounds like you guys have a good plan for getting the resources that you need to be able to, just like all, you know, I think conservation, similar with conservation, you know, you guys need to be able to go out and evaluate, similar to what the planning board does or the zoning board of appeals, and someone comes to you with a plan, and you might need to get a second opinion, you might need to have your own analysis done. And so having that fund set up and completing that second piece of the puzzle, you know, I'm glad that you're able to work with the town manager and kind of figure out a good way forward here. And so that makes a lot of sense, and so I just want to acknowledge that. You know, application fees should be, you know, on par with what is done regionally. I know that we just had this update with our inspectors, and so, you know, our building inspectors, electrical inspectors, plumbing, in which we, you know, identified that we were a little below, well below the median, and so we needed to remedy that. And then the ongoing support. You know, if you can categorize your backlog, because you say we're going to probably hear some noise here, what is the backlog? How long is it taking right now for you guys to move forward?
Well, it depends, because all of the projects are different, right? And so on any given day, we could have, you know, an administrative determination request. Somebody wants to take down a couple of trees. Is this okay? All the way to, currently, we have 390 Howard Street, which is a very complex project of, I think, 149 potential houses, right, and a very large tract of land. And all of those take a different amount of time. I've asked our full-time administrator to prioritize violations because since we've had, you know, extended vacancies, there've been a lot of people that have, you know, there's always people who don't know. But there have also been a lot of people that have just kind of taken measures into their own hands. So there are a lot of violations that currently we need to work on. And, you know, in case you don't know, I'll let you know, there's a two-year kind of statute of limitations on getting those violations actually corrected, so it's very important that we act promptly there.
Can you clarify that? So is it when the violation becomes known to you?
No, it's when the violation occurs. And there's kind of a tiered, there's kind of a tiered class on violations as well. So, for example, if somebody fills in a wetland, that violation persists, right? So if we found out about it three years later, it's still an ongoing violation, so we can act on that and require the wetland be restored. We would only be able to apply for fees and enforcement measures back to two years, right? So we can go back three years later and say, ah, now we're going to find you for three years of this violation. And of course, we'd only want to apply that if we had somebody who really was being, you know, negligent and not working with us to correct the problem. In the case of, you know, other types of violations, they may be more of an instance in time, so that we may lose our opportunity to go back and ask for the corrective action.
Okay.
So, for example, somebody cutting down trees, right, we may lose our opportunity to go back and make them plant the tree again. So that would be a long-term or permanent, you know, degradation of the well and the buffer zone.
So, I mean, I know that people can walk and chew gum, but, I mean, what you're describing is in the process of walking that we're going to need a little bit more support here. So I just want to get clarification. You know, obviously, we don't want to have violations of the Wetland Protection Act, but as you guys are prioritizing what to address, are you prioritizing those things that have that to your limitation kind of only while you guys get caught up to speed on everything else?
Yes.
I don't have any other.
But I don't expect that to be like maybe two months of just doing violations. I think we're going to continue to be able to interleave the support of violations with ongoing requests for, you know, certificates of completion as well as the, you know, the NOIs and the RDAs, right? But we probably won't be able to provide as much help to people that don't know how to do the applications, which is unfortunate, right? And therefore, by default, would be prioritizing people that know how to do the applications and the engineering firms that do it, you know, professionally as a day job.
Broadly speaking, I mean, the Wetland Protection Act is a bit complicated, so broadly speaking, I'm asking for the back of the napkin, kind of just guess here. Of all the people who come and get things approved by you, what percentage of them end up being in violation at some point? Is it low? Is it high? Is it most?
So I think what you're asking is, because a lot of times when we find people in violation, the first thing that we ask them to do is to do a retroactive type of application and go through the process, and then we determine, you know, what exactly they need to correct, and do they need to do it promptly, or can they go through the normal three-year cycle time on the permit? I would say probably 25% is some type of retroactive sort of issue. Yeah. And, you know, so then if you looked at that kind of retroactively looking from like December back to July, it's a pileup of work, and, you know.
I think I was asking, that's a good to note, but I think I was just asking of the people who aren't those retroactive violations, but the people who knowingly come to you to say, hey, I need to complete this, you know, get your approval. I'm just curious as to if the rules are so complicated that a big chunk of them.
No, 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 no. Yeah, sorry. I totally misunderstood where you were going with that. No. Yeah, I think of the violations, you know, there's a subset of people who knew and said, well, let me see if I get caught, right? And there's, you know, a subset of people who genuinely don't know, right? I mean, they just have no idea. I'm on my land. I wanted to cut down that tree. And they have no idea that that stream that was 10 feet away put that tree in a regulated buffer zone, right? One of the things that the commission has voted to do this year is, you know, put another flyer in one of the town property tax mailers so that we increase the visibility to the rules. And not the complexity of the rules, just the, hey, if you're doing something with 100 feet of a wetland, you need to come and talk to us about it, right, to raise visibility. We would like to, when we have more cycles with our office, get some of those brochures printed up and posted on town bulletin boards, maybe over at the library, maybe, you know, here in Town Hall, over in the Ritter Building as well, so that as people are kind of bumping around, doing their usual stuff, they, you know, have an opportunity to see that and go, oh, hey, maybe that applies to me, to raise more awareness.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Do we have any other follow-ups or questions?
I just have two things I wanted to add, just out of the conversation. OpenGov, Brian Kingress has been really pivotal in that move. He is considered our in-house expert at OpenGov. He really knows the full capabilities of the system, so he's been helping the Conservation Administrator.
A building commissioner.
Yes, our building commissioner. Thank you, for anyone who doesn't know him by name. And I also want to recognize Sophie's, the Conservation Administrator's, work on trying to create written protocols and directions for people coming to the office to try to divert people to an instruction format of how to fill out applications, because that will divert a lot of questions and phone calls as well.
That's excellent. All right. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We're going to go to interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So first, we have an appointment to the Cultural Council. This is for Christine Foltz of 284 Lancaster Ave. So I'll ask Christine if she wouldn't mind coming forward. Good to see you, Christine.
Mr. Chair, as this is my wife, I will recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
On a steady point of view, I'd like to switch your name tags.
Whose?
It says Tom Alonso. Need to go.
Are they really wrong?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
A steady speaking.
All right. So Christine, good to see you. I want to just acknowledge that Mr. Alonso recused himself, and normally when members recuse, they remove themselves from being part of the conversation. Mr. Alonso has done just that. Christine, if you wouldn't mind just stating your interest in being in the Cultural Council, and I want to comment as well. I was at the museum the other day, not the museum, the library the other day, and I saw some art pieces. I thought, these are beautiful. And they told me that you made them, which I had no idea.
No, I didn't. My father made them, and they are all registered with the Smithsonian. All of my father's artwork is registered at the Smithsonian. My father was a small-town doctor, and this was what he did in his free time to relax. So the sculptures are there. I think everyone should view art at different points, and it should be public for a lot of it. So therefore, I've put them up there in the library.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind expressing your interest, I think you kind of just did a little bit, but if you would like to express your interest.
I was once the chair of this committee back about 15 years ago, and I was on the committee when we just offered grants. And pretty much, now the committee is changing. They've got some funds, and they're working with the high school to do types of, I guess it's visiting artist-type things so that the young students can see what artists do, whether it's in music, dance, visual, or craft. And I have a background in art. My education was at the Royal Academy of Fine Arts in Copenhagen, Denmark, and I'm a textile designer, and I still do design work. I'm a prototype designer and a textile artist for engineering companies, including the Army, which is where I'm doing most of my work right now. I also have a studio at home. I have looms. I help as many people as I can to learn about textiles. And I believe that everyone should be introduced to art at some point in their lives. And this is, our Cultural Council has the opportunities to do that at this point in time. So therefore, I'd like to be on it.
Thank you. I want to turn to the members for any questions or comments, members may have. I'm going to start with Selectman NuZolo, who's on the screen behind us.
Christine, I don't have any questions. I mean, it sounds like you'd be a fabulous fit, so thank you for stepping up and wanting to volunteer.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for stepping up. Have you met with the other members of the Cultural Council?
Yes, I have. I've been to a couple of their meetings to assess what's going on, and therefore, I offered to join them after the meetings.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, number one, and also you and some of your work, and certainly your background is familiar to me. And I think you may recall, we had some discussions. My dad was in the textile business all of his working life. So I have nothing further, except a thank you.
Christine, I ask your husband often about how you're doing. I tell him to tell you hello all the time, and I'm sure it's a little bit annoying to him somewhat, but, you know, I really, I think you have a really good presence. And so there's no question for me and a good mind for all of this. So there's no question that I'm going to support the appointment to the Cultural Council. Well, why are you here? I want to take the opportunity to make a plug for something that I would like to see. I think the Cultural Council is best primed to kind of take the lead in a void that we have in town, which is the coordination of cultural events. And, you know, I think that, you know, it's kind of hard to pinpoint who do we, you know, who should carry this burden or who should, I wouldn't say burden, but who should carry the responsibility of, you know, kind of putting together some of these events that we have, promoting them? And it would be nice, especially as we, you know, as we think about how society is shifting and becoming more digital, and the opportunities to interact face-to-face become more and more limited, that having those opportunities in our community and focusing on that in addition to supporting the artists in our community, but also creating those opportunities for young people, as you said, to interact with art. You know, it's important to me. You know, I donate money in certain ways, but, you know, I make, I'm a, the one that I prioritize the most are my donations, annual donations to the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston and supporting art programs. And so it would be great if I think, you know, the Cultural Council can help shift and move in addition to their current charge and maybe come back to us and say, here's how we can expand the charge. But I do think you guys are better suited than really anyone else to kind of take that point in the community.
And I believe there have been some discussions about that kind of thing, of having art interactions with the whole community. And in the past, there have been a few, but they're far between. I do know that there are some cultural things coming up in a few years, but we, for the, what is it? The 300th birthday? And we need to do things before then. So, and also, you can always donate to our local museum, which is the Fitchburg Art Museum, which I am also on their collection committee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions this evening? And I will. I will commit to that. You know, I recently went to the Fitchburg Art Museum when the Community Foundation had a kind of a gala there as they were supporting some of the expansion. And very impressive, the renovations, the work going on at BF Brown. I think you guys are loosely associated with that, but yeah, BF Brown becoming like an artist kind of studio and residence. So it really is good to see the art scene in the region.
It's in the backyard of the museum.
Yep.
And we've spent a lot of time talking about that and working on it.
Yep. My husband went there for middle school, BF Brown.
It's going to change.
All right. Is there a motion this evening?
I move to appoint Christine Foltz to the Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Mr. NuZolo.
Aye.
Ms. Imki.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Thank you.
So please be sure to get sworn in from the town clerk, and then also, it's not so relevant today, but we do have an appointment policy. I just encourage you, we recently revised it, encourage you to, we'll make sure we email it over to you, but just encourage you to read it through. We did have some really good revisions, so thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's yell out to Mr. Tom Alonso. They can rejoin the board. So next, and good to see you, Donna.
Good to see you. Thank you.
All right. So next tonight, we have an appointment of an alternate to the Historical Commission member. This is from Mr. Passios of 56 Whiting Street. Mr. Passios, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and just explaining your interest, then also, if you wouldn't mind kind of us walking us through why you're looking to be an alternate and what that really means.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I know nobody knows me in town, but anyway. Yeah, I'll broach the how this came about first with the appointments that you guys made and then didn't make a few weeks ago. I immediately put in a volunteer form. I immediately put in a volunteer form with the concern that there could very well be an issue trying to get quorum with a seven-member board. That is a mute point now, but I'm still concerned. And the, actually, the chair reached out to me after the form was sent to him by Elaine and said, you know, I'd like to have you brought to the select board to be appointed as an alternate. So it was his idea originally for me to be appointed as an alternate. I was in there, in the file, in case there was a vacancy, but I'm very willing to go in as an alternate. Over the past six months or so, maybe longer, I've already been collaborating with the commission and the historical society, working on recovering historical documents, pictures, and so on from the Passios Elementary School. I'm sure there's still more stuff in there, but we have recovered a couple boxes worth of newspaper cuttings and so on and so forth that go back to 1953. Also involved in, in a couple of other things that the commission is working on, I'm excited to hear that they expect to have grant money available soon to hire a consultant to finally do the complete inventory of historical locations in Lunenburg. I hope to help expedite that along in any way I can. And just in general, help out, been here all my life. Family came to town in 1953, and I was born that year, later in that year. And I think I've got a wealth of knowledge, some of it starting to fade a little bit from the earlier years, but, you know, I've got a pretty good knowledge of the history in town, and I hope I can help out the commission.
Excellent. All right, I'm going to turn to the members of the board for any questions or comments they may have. Start. Do you want to start?
I was waiting for Caesar to move, but he.
All right, I didn't know how we were doing this. First of all, it's not really that important, but I was a little confused when I saw you walk up to the podium, because it looks like you're also signed in on Zoom? Or did you like call in, or?
Yeah, I signed into Zoom in case there's anything screen-cheered, so that I can see it better on my screen on the computer. Davis Park.
Hologram.
I didn't know if we have like a.
Yeah, I'm actually a hologram right here in front of the board. I'm sorry.
Say that last part again.
Who, me?
Yes.
Sorry, there was a lot of, a lot of talking just now. I just said I didn't know if there was like a Mr. Passios impersonator or something after I saw him locked up. But anyway, I mean, I can't think of anyone more qualified to be on this commission. I'm sure any project that you're a part of will benefit tremendously, so I'm more than happy to support this. That's all.
Thank you.
So my question is, what is an alternate member?
Well, I'm going to have to polish up on that to be 100% sure and to do it right. I made that comment to your chair a couple of weeks ago, that, you know, between alternates and, what's the other term?
Associates.
Associates. Associates are pretty easy. They just show up and, and, you know, they get to know what a particular committee is doing. An alternate, to my understanding, is a member that attends as many meetings as possible, and especially if the chair knows he's going to be short for quorum. My understanding is the alternate can sit in and be a voting member for a meeting that does not have enough members for a quorum. Now, I'm going to definitely fact-check that to make sure we've got it all right, but that's, that's the plan.
Only vote at meetings when you're needed to make a quorum?
Correct.
Okay. I know there's an article going in, town meeting to the size. Is alternate addressed anywhere in our bylaws? Does it exist? Do we need to create it?
The last question, the last question is, that's a subjective question. The first two were objective questions. Yes, we have an article that seeks to finally, after what happened several weeks ago, codify in the bylaws what it is, what the historical commission is, so we don't ever not have the definition at our hand. And secondly, again, objectively, there is no mention of alternates, to which I would add, we, just like we couldn't appoint people to positions that don't exist, we cannot appoint an alternate, because there is no such thing as an alternate member as of tonight. So you're standing before us, there is no alternate position to appoint you to. So officially, this is, I will take the same stand as I did then, which is, this is not a, this is not a duly authorized appointment, because we can't appoint you to something that doesn't exist.
And to my point, the, the process has always been vague. I don't think it's spelled out word-for-word anywhere, is it? Or if it is.
I mean, there are some committees, like the zoning board of appeal, has associate members as, as part of the definition of a body. You know, I've said in the past, and I will reiterate here, that I think to be, first of all, I would not be in favor of an alternate member in the way you defined it. This is not like a football team, that if somebody gets hurt, somebody runs in. Like, you have five people, or seven people, or nine people, depending on the board, and that's the people you have to play. And, you know, if there's not a quorum, you don't like, oh, well, so-and-so came, it's not like a free-form poker game, you're just going to fill in, right? So I would not be for that. Now, as far as an associate member, we have done that unofficially, like with the conservation commission, just sit in. They can let you sit into every meeting they want, and you'd be the first one, obviously, with that kind of background. If somebody says, I've sat into every meeting of this body that I want to be part of for two years, I would find it hard-pressed to be, find a board that wouldn't be the first to appoint you if you, if that was known. So you don't need an official position to do that. But as far as setting up a system of alternates to accomplish what you just defined, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay. Just in the back of my mind, you, you brought up the zoning board of appeals. It's my understanding that there's at least one member that's an associate or an alternate that also steps in.
But that's defined in their role. That's, it's defined in the zoning board.
That's perfectly fine.
And that's because they have, because they have deadlines of projects that by state statute need to be done, so you're allowed to do that.
And I totally agree. I don't want to be involved in something that.
No, I appreciate it. And again, as I said that night, has nothing to do with the person, it has to do with the process. I'm just not.
You do look vaguely, vaguely familiar. I, if there were such thing as an alternate, I would have no problem appointing you to it. I'll say that for the record. And are we sure we don't want to try to mess up the historical commission stuff anymore? You know, and.
I know you well enough to know that's a joke, but no. I will be serious for a moment and say, no, I don't, would like not to mess it up anymore.
My only point, and I'm not arguing what we've just discussed, is that it came from the chair. It didn't come from me to go for this alternate. And I didn't shy away from it, but I knew there may be some challenges.
Yeah, I take a different.
Not critical, so that's all.
I take a different read, if I may, Mr. Franco just jumped in.
Of course. As vice chair, I say the chair can jump in.
I take, I take a different read. So I think that previously, I think there was some ambiguity on, on, on my part about how many members were comprised, or the board was comprised of. And with a reading of three to seven, I certainly didn't have a conflict with, with appointing more than the current membership of five. I think that, you know, we do have this kind of unofficial associate thing here in town, and whatever that means, you know, it's not always defined. Sometimes this board appoints associates, and sometimes they're kind of appointed by the existing multi-member bodies. I mean, I don't have a conflict with appointing an alternate. And I know this request came from the chair of the historical commission. I mean, a board comprised of five members, to me, does not, I don't, I can understand that on one hand, and the other side have a, have a pool of six people that can be that five. I don't necessarily have a conflict with that. So I understand that, that the necessity of the request is that, is that, my understanding is that a member has some life things that, that sometimes interferes with attendance. And the commission, given the breadth of what you guys are trying to work on, or what the commission's trying to work on and do, that it's important for them to maintain their membership. And so I, I think the request is a healthy compromise, that there's the static members, and in the absence of the static members, that another, a sixth member functions as, as one of those missing static members. I don't have a conflict in that, but that's, I'm one member of the board. And so, you know, I'm hearing that another, at least one other member, I didn't capture two, have a conflict with that. I caught that another member didn't, so. But it is something that maybe has to be better defined.
If I could.
Go ahead.
I would say that I think it's important, where other boards and commissions, et cetera, specifically have these roles defined, it would sort of eviscerate the meaning of doing that if we were to just sort of like, for lack of a better term, by case law, just decide that we can plug another member onto this board. I think it does have to be clearly defined. It isn't, unfortunately, and we do, I do agree with Mr. Alonso here, that we just, it's not defined, we can't invent it. So.
The email we have from the chair of the historical commission, I think, came before Mr. Alonso discovered the, in the archives of town meetings, that we couldn't go to a seven-member board. And so the, the email reads, the issue with the quorum was getting four, for a quorum as a seven-member commission. So with five, three is a quorum, so I think maybe it's less, they've been functioning as five. I haven't heard complaints about getting a quorum, if that's been an issue, functioning as five members. And I'm, I'm not comfortable, if, voting on something that doesn't exist. I don't want to vote to not, to be a non-vote again, if the alternate isn't defined. I mean, I think Green Communities has associate members, right?
Yes, but that was, those were created when the, when that committee went from a task force to a committee.
Yeah.
That was a suggestion I actually made, that we add two associates to the list of possible members.
My understanding is the associate members are well-documented when we have them.
So I, I think, Mr. Passios, that, you know, we're certainly not going to make a negative motion here today. You know, and this is something that, again, you know, I, I know we put on the agenda at the request of the chair of the historical commission. I understood that alternate didn't fully exist. I understood that this would be a point of conversation. And so I don't think there's an appointment for us to make this evening. But I do believe that the historical commission would be wise to put forward a request for us to make a modification to permit this.
I'm perfectly fine with that, and it doesn't shy me away from my collaborations with them that are already in place and continuing forward.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with this approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, whether the historical commission, I, I wouldn't encourage them to put something forward, but they certainly have the right to put something forward. I would, as I said then, if they voted forward or somebody else put it forward, I'd be against it, but that's fine.
Not for Mr. Passios. I just want to bring up one other point, though, is that I think it would be even worse to do, to take the step and appoint, and make an appointment to an alternate where the understanding is that an alternate actually has an elevated authority relative to, say, an associate, who never has voting authority. So it would be even worse, I think, so.
We love you.
So I would, I would move that we, that we dismiss the non-appointment without prejudice.
Good cop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Mr. Alonso, I, I know that next kind of comes the composition of the historical commission. Do you want to just lead straight into this?
Yeah, I didn't know this was on until the revised edition of the agenda, but all I've done in my proposed article is exactly what I said I would do, which is take exactly the existing two votes from the 1979 May town meeting, the two articles there that created the, that adopted mass general law, and also created a, that at that point, a six-member body, and then the May 2008 annual town meeting article that changed to five. This addition that would be added to the bylaws under the proper chapter just incorporates that wording in the form that the other bodies exist under, like the capital planning committee or the council on aging, et cetera. So therefore, it won't get lost by saying it's not in the bylaws anymore. It just puts it in the bylaws. That's all it does. Doesn't change anything about what we've been doing with it, just codifies it.
All right. So I think this has been provided to all members, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions for Mr. Alonso on that? We can also discuss it under the one articles later in the agenda. Okay. Discuss, next on our agenda, discuss committed and uncommitted.
Town manager.
Oh, yeah, I sure did, all my crosshows.
That's all right.
So we're going to go to the town manager report, to the town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A announcement, the annual town meeting is Saturday, May 4th at 9:00 a.m. in the middle school, high school auditorium, and the annual town election is Saturday, May 18th, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the TC Passios Building. For board committee, commission vacancies, we have one vacancy on the architectural preservation district commission, one vacancy on the council on aging, two associate vacancies on the green communities committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the open space committee, and one vacancy on the personnel committee. Anyone interested in any of these positions can complete the volunteer applications found on the town website, return it to the select board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, we have the following positions open: conservation administrative assistant, 10 hours a week; facilities custodian, 40 hours a week; land use director, 40 hours a week; planning board administrative assistant, 36 hours a week; seasonal cemetery laborers; seasonal lifeguards; and temporary administrative assessing assistant for 32 hours a week. Information on these positions can be found on the town website under job opportunities. For current bids and RFPs, we received four responses to the request for qualifications for the owners' project manager services for Marshall Park, and they are currently being reviewed and will be discussed at the park commission meeting. Invitation for bids for the Flat Hill Culvert project are due March 27th. Invitation for bids for cleaning services for town buildings are due April 4th, and requests for proposals for data collection services for the assessing department for cyclical inspections for fiscal '25 through fiscal '27 are due April 8th. An update on our natural gas contract. I worked with our energy broker to secure a new rate for our natural gas accounts for when our current contract with Sprague expires in November of 2025. Our new rate will be $5.668 per decotherm for a three-year contract from December 2025 until November 2028. Currently, the rate is $4.39 per decotherm until November 30th, 2025. Knowing this pricing now, will assist the town and school in planning these related costs when developing future-year budgets. An update on solid waste and recycling. As our three-year contract with E.L. Harvey expires this year, we have been requesting a meeting with them to negotiate an extension to our contract. Last Thursday, the DPW director, our recycling trash consultant, Jamie Toll, and I met with our representative from E.L. Harvey and learned that in order to extend our contract into the same conditions, it would be an approximately 70% price increase. It was explained to us that they bid our contract assuming 80 hours of labor a week, and it is currently taking them about 120 hours of labor a week to finish the routes. In order to accomplish this in the time needed to make it profitable, they would need to purchase new trucks, which would add to the cost of the contract. It was understood that we would go out to bid shortly with the same model that we currently have in place as an option, and we also discussed that moving to a cart system was another alternative that we will be looking at. Speaking with other trash haulers, most are only bidding on contracts that have a cart system in place due to the, being less labor-intensive and a more automated system that reduces their costs. We will work with looking at that model with E.L. Harvey while simultaneously going out to bid using our current pay-as-you-throw curbside collection model. Per letter we sent in early February that served as protection in the event the contract was not extended in time for June 30th, we formally notified E.L. Harvey that we were requesting a 90-day extension, and therefore, our pricing will remain the same until the end of September 2024.
70% increase, and so we're going to go out to bid for trash. Got it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Or look, work with them on an alternative model with the carts. Or look, um, work with them on an alternative model with the cart system.
So what is, can you, can you explain the, not being somebody?
A cart model would be.
Right, what is the cart model?
Um, meaning you'd have the bins, the totes.
Oh, okay.
Basically, a toter model. So you'd have one for trash and one for recycling. Um, and there's all different models out there as far as size of containers, um, but, so we would be looking at probably two 65-gallon toters, um, and that, and how to implement that system, how many actual users we have, because in our last bid, we put in approximately 4,000 households. Do we actually pick up at 4,000 households? Um, that's not something that's tracked, um, so we're going to be working with them to see if they can, um, get an idea as well, because it's going to vary week to week. Some people only use the recycling for town and have their own curbside hauler.
Right.
So Shirley uses this system, it's basically those toters and the, and the, um, truck, instead of having a person that's throwing the bags in the back, that it's, it's a mechanical arm that comes out.
That knocks them over instead.
Correct.
Which I've seen, yes, okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure I get the method right.
Yep. So it's an automated system, yes. Did you like it?
Uh-uh. I, yeah, I don't have a problem with it now, or, or than actually.
Do, do the homeowners have to buy the bins, or are they provided?
How we would look at doing it is not the town managing the, the bins, the toters, is through E.L. Harvey or, um, as them, um, maintaining those toters. So that would probably, you know, it's going to be a cost to the town to do that upfront, purchase of all of those, but after that point, they monitor and maintain those, and if a person loses their tote or a neighbor takes their tract, they have a whole tracking system for.
Well, I'm more concerned with if, if they have to purchase it, that it gets damaged by the machinery, and therefore, you have to buy another one. So if they're saying, you know, because I'm sure they'd be quick to say, well, we didn't do that, you know, this.
All their trucks have cameras.
What?
All their trucks have cameras.
Wow.
So they, we've actually had to use those in some cases to look back on an, um, incident, so they've provided footage.
And that, that would be the, so if we went with a cart system, that would be the end of the bags, is that correct?
Not necessarily. Um, that has been a good way for us to, um, recover costs related to trash, and, um, so people could still, we could still use the pay-as-you-throw program, except those bags would go into the toter.
Right, but if nobody is looking, then how, if the person is automated, the person who's running the truck is automatically just picking them up, I mean, are they, are they supposed to stop and look?
They would, um, as explained to me, they also mon, would be able to monitor that from, and inside the truck as well. So they're seeing as those barrels go in, what's going into.
Because the ones we have now, they go up pretty high, and then the arm comes out and dumps it.
One side is the recycling and one is the trash. I don't, unless they have the camera right there.
Well, not only that, I mean, that, and the camera has to be working. I mean, these are, these are garbage companies, they can't keep their trucks working, forget about the cameras working.
It's already dumped by the time you know, oh, that was regular, that was glad bags, not town bags.
How much debris gets spread around from this?
I haven't seen a lot in my cul-de-sac, honestly.
Do you guys have covered lids?
Yes, that helps a lot.
Yeah, because I noticed it around town.
Especially on the windy days.
But I mean, they didn't have the cart system, but they provided us with the bins when I first moved to Lunenburg, and they have the covers.
These would be with lids.
Yeah, they would have to.
Lids are key, with the animals too. I can put it out the night before.
Yeah.
My dad's trash, you can't do that.
Right, yep.
It's a mess.
I can't put it out the night before, either, you know.
Um, so, so a 70% price increase with the current model, not with the, so the cart model would be.
Current, current model, if we kept everything the same, that's what it would, um, if we negotiated a new contract with E.L. Harvey. That's why, they understood completely why we wanted to put that out to bid, there were no hard feelings of that, where, um, I think their service has been, um, pretty good with the town, as far as.
Recently, yeah, doesn't have a great history. I mean, it didn't start off so well.
We had a rough year.
Right, we had, there's going to be hookups when you're transferring from, we had Casella for 10 years, and going to entirely new hauler who's learning all the different routes. There were private roads mixed in there that shouldn't have been, um, in the beginning.
Well, there were, well, there was, there were reports on social media about constant misstreets, and, you know, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about people complaining that, for things they should have obviously considered for weather events, that is understandable, but, I mean, there were, there were issues, I mean, they were mu, they've been much better, and when we got the, the Recycling and Trash Coordinator, that really centered everything so everybody could go through the same person. That was usually helpful.
Yes.
So.
I don't know if this would help or not, but in Maynard, we alternated recycling, so it was trash every week, but recycling was every other week.
That is something to consider as well for.
Especially if you go to a cart system, that would probably be a lot easier because of the size of the carts.
So Shirley does that, but I will say, most households are doing far more recycling than they're generating trash.
I know I am.
And so it ends up being that, that, you know, we, our tenants and Shirley just throw things in the trash that, because they run out of space in the recycling bin. So that's something that has to be managed, um, for sure.
So if I did my math right, with the natural gas, it's a 29% increase.
At least it's not 70.
We're going into effect at the end of 2025.
Yeah.
And that was an abnormally, uh, low rate, um, at that time for natural gas.
But this is locked, we've signed with this already?
Yes.
So that will be our rate.
Yes.
No matter what prices do.
And it is a very good rate, right now.
I don't know prices of natural gas.
We did some analysis, and it's cheaper than, uh, what I'm paying, and I think, except for, I think there was, I think it's almost every property that I'm paying gas at, it was less money, um, than what I'm paying.
I honestly don't know what money is.
And through the, um, market, um, link.
Yeah, through the market analysis, it's also really low. The Town Manager, I had talked about this, um, previously, and I did a comparison with properties that all around the state that I pay gas bills for, and it was lower than what I'm paying.
Yeah, I'm just saying, looking to next year, we already know some of the increases we're going to be facing.
Yeah.
So this will be the following fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Manager related to, related to the Town Manager Report? All right. So I know that we kind of already did the discussion of composition of Historical Commission, so now we're going to discuss committed and uncommitted ARPA funds, and I will ask for, um, Dr. Burnham and for Carol Arshinbo, the Chair of the School Committee, to be a part of this conversation. If you wouldn't mind, uh, either joining us at the table with the microphones provided, both are on, or if you want to stand at the podium, you're welcome to do that as well. So I'll start the conversation here, so, um, the Town Manager and I, Ms. Arshinbo and Dr. Burnham, uh, met toward the end of last week, we also met again yesterday, um, to try to further work to bridge the gap, um, between what was identified as a, as a minimum budget, which I believe is 5.44%, um, and how we can better bridge that gap. So one of the things that we identified, and, and I want to also give some, uh, credit to, um, Selectman Emke for her conversations as the liaison for the School Committee, I know she's met with, um, Ms. Arshinbo, they've met, I think, coffee, they've talked over the phone, I know she's interacted with the Superintendent. And so what the request is, uh, today is taking another look at the ARPA allocations that we have, and specifically, um, looking at the funds that have been previously allocated for sidewalks for the schools. Uh, and this, again, was sidewalk extension coming from Turkey Hill Middle School down to, um, Turkey Hill Road, and then also going up, um, Highland, um, kind of down towards Marshall Park, and I'm blanking on the name of that street, right, Chestnut, going down Chestnut, so continuing the sidewalks that kind of stopped near Highland, picking them up and continuing them out. So this project, as per our report, came to $101,640, and this is what the Board has previously allocated for ARPA. The Town Manager worked with DPW Director to identify if, uh, Chapter, I believe, 90 Funding, um, could be utilized for those sidewalks, and the answer is yes. And so the request from the school, uh, from the Chair of the School Committee, uh, is to, is for the Select Board to reallocate the $101,640 from sidewalks to the schools, uh, and then also to allocate of the remaining balance we see on our sheet of $165,000 to reallocate 120 of those dollars, 120,000, that is, um, also toward the school. So that would be a total allocation of about 221,640 bucks, um, and then they had very specific projects in the budget that were going to come out of this. I don't know if you're prepared to speak to what those are, but I'll come back to that one in a second, uh, but that's going to fund certain projects that would help bridge the divide. Um, and then also unrelated to this, but the Town Manager also identified, um, uh, pausing the pavement management plan for one year, which is a $50,000 add, and reallocating those funds toward the school district, uh, that that would also help further bridge that gap. So if we wouldn't mind just picking up kind of where I left off, on what would the 210, uh, roughly 211, almost 212,000 dollars fund, uh, from the school budget?
Well, first, I want to just say that I appreciate the efforts put in by the Town Manager, by Mr. Jeffries, and by Ms. Emke, because, um, it was her creative thinking and her going through, um, the budget so very completely that helped us to try to figure out how to do this. Uh, we had determined that the Town Manager's budget wasn't going to work, there, there just wasn't enough money, and I appreciate this attempt to put it back together. So what the intent is, and I'm going to have the Superintendent jump in with the exact numbers, but the intent is that we had asked for two earmarks from the legislative group. I received a call from Margaret Scarsdale yesterday saying, you might get 30,000 maybe. So that wasn't going to work. So, um, this, as, as we talked about, would be a sure way of not worrying about the earmark issue, the ifiness of it. It covers, um, the enhanced 911 that we need in all our buildings, that is a requirement that, and another requirement that is not funded, um, we need that, and it would also cover the network security along with some Chromebooks. And by taking those things out of our budget and putting them, using ARPA funds to cover them, we are able to bridge the gap so that I am comfortable recommending to the School Committee that the, um, what would then be, I think, a 4.1.
1.9.
1.9 budget is going, we're going to tread water, we're going to be okay, we'll be able to tread water through the next school year. So I'll, I'll let Dr. Burnham jump off beyond that.
Um, so just to reiterate, um, the 911 compliance, um, would total $63,676.
Can you give that to me, we're trying, 63,600? Thank you.
The network, um, security upgrades, $82,119. And then the Chromebook purchases that we would do annually for, um, new devices for those entering Grade Six, they maintain those devices as their own one-to-one until they exit Grade Eight, and then, um, as ninth graders, they are issued brand-new Chromebooks again that they maintain as their one-to-one learning device until they graduate high school. So those purchases, purchases of Chromebooks for us is an annual expense. Taking a look at, uh, the Chromebook purchases, um, including some replacement Chromebooks for the Turkey Hill Elementary School, for any devices that are outdated and can't support the MCAS assessment, because it's all done online. That project or that purchase would have totaled $102,000, so the remaining 76,000-ish dollars of the ARPA money, uh, would be put towards that, uh, $102,000 purchase of Chromebooks.
So to count, uh, may, I could be off by doing 210 instead of 220, and that may be why our numbers aren't jiving here. Sixty-three, sixty-six, sixty-six.
I believe, I believe that the Superintendent gave us a total, and she said that the Chromebooks wouldn't totally be covered, but the total's about $248,000, and we're, and we have 221 to give, so there'll be.
Correct.
So 20, 27,000 or so will stay in there, but.
Stay in there, gotcha.
Yeah, so the three numbers then, and I'm going to repeat them back to you, the three numbers are enhanced 911, $63,676, network security, $82,119, and then the Grade Six Chromebooks, $74,205, for a total of 220.
Right, that's the total of 220.
Yes, okay.
So can I ask how we got to 220?
Yes.
Because the two earmarks come to 145, 795, and the current balance of ARPA is 165, 894.
We're not, according to Chair, he didn't allocate all of it, so it's the 101, 640 from the pump for the sidewalks, and then of the 165, he mentioned 120 going to them.
But the 101 is not included in this 165, 894 remaining balance.
Correct, he didn't, he didn't allocate all of it.
Correct.
Was what his motion, well, not his motion, but that's what his introduction said.
Yeah, so that would leave then an ARPA remaining balance of 45, roughly, $45,894, um, and I know that part of that is that we had mentioned, um, and, um, solar panels are the old dump, that there's going to be, that, to move forward on that product would require us to hire a consultant for about 25 to 30,000 dollars, and so that preserves enough money for us to engage in a revenue-generating enterprise. But again, those, if we decide not to pursue that, those funds do remain available to reallocate to, you know, whatever we want to allocate it towards. But that was why, when we were working through the numbers, why I said 220 was probably, uh, or 120 was probably the ceiling.
Mr. Chair, just for my own edification, we've, we've, we've heard you talk about it, how close are we to getting someone to do that?
Yeah, we, we are, I, I have not scheduled it in March, but it is ready, I can schedule it, uh, in April. We're close.
So, okay, all the, all of the sidewalk, 101, 640, is going towards the earmarks?
Mm-hmm.
And then a portion of this remaining balance of 165 is going to cover Chromebooks. And how close does that get us to the needs base? What's the gap now? Also, the, I guess, the 50,000?
50,000 dollars from the pavement management.
Forty-three thousand?
So if you, if you were to take a look, um, because I've done this analysis, because I anticipated that I would have to help, um, parents to understand how far we were from that 5.44 budget.
Right.
So if you were to incorporate the 220,000 into the operational budget, plus the 50,000 from the paving, the new growth, um, starting with the Town Manager's 2.94 budget, um, that gets us to about a, a 5.19%. So there's, there's still a little bit of a gap, but, um, I've had my department heads and, um, principals hyper-scrutinizing expense lines, um, and we have made some additional, uh, cuts to expense lines. That'll put us in a place where our budget is going to be really tight next year, um, so we will have to walk that line very carefully. We are also, um, applying, um, all of the, uh, grant funding that we possibly can, uh, towards offsetting, uh, salaries for positions like our intervention teaching staff, um, our tutors, and paraprofessionals. Additionally, uh, we will be applying some, um, some of Additionally, we will be applying some of our school choice revolving account monies to offset some of this as well.
And these Chromebooks, it's okay to use ARPA money on them? It's not recurring? It's just for staff, not for
They're for students.
Are they for the students?
Yes.
Or are they for, okay. Because you had mentioned there was a high school
Additionally, we will still have funded in our budget the monies to purchase devices, replacement cycle devices for high school staff. That's the staff that's up for next year.
And that's your biggest group of staff?
That's my biggest group of staff.
One of the other things, like with Emke, is that in addition to the school district kind of taking another look at their expenses, I think that the, I know the town manager was taking a look at some income projections from local receipts, which are always conservative. But I know that the gap here we're talking about is like 40 something thousand dollars roughly. And so, you know, there could be an opportunity to find that middle ground. And then, of course, there's the unknowns of the things that we may find out are coming in this year, over the next week or so.
Well, and the other thing is, are the unknowns on our end? And as long as, you know, everyone is clear, this is an extremely tight budget. So if we get two kids move into town with a hundred dollar out-of-district placement, a hundred thousand dollar out-of-district placement, we may be scrambling, you may see us visit. But we 100% appreciate the, everybody working together to try and bridge this so that in the next year, we'll be able to fund the school at least at a point where we're not panicked about it. That hopefully our achievement that is coming up and has been coming up steadily will continue to grow, and that's the goal.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So first of all, I want to thank you both for coming in and sharing this. And your recognition that the town manager has worked hard to, with all the funding coming in. I wish that sentiment was shared among your whole committee, but that's not shared among your whole committee. But I will address the elephant in the room, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm hearing this correctly. If you're saying that we get to this, and let's just say the local receipts come in a little higher, whether we're 43,000 dollars short or we get to the total 5.4, am I under the understanding that there will be no need for the override? Is that what I'm hearing? Because we have gotten literally inundated with emails supporting something that now may not even be needed. I just want to make sure I know, because this change is so fluid, it changes every meeting. I want to make sure where we stand by the end of this meeting at least.
Well, I would say that at some point in time, there would have to be an override.
I would be the first one behind you saying, I've been saying that for 15 years. So I totally understand that. I totally agree.
And I know that we have a group of citizens that are working very hard to put one together for now. And I don't, we have not had this conversation with them. To be honest, I am one person on the board. My preference would be to wait and do it carefully next year with the town and to work together towards an override, but I'm not the only voice.
And I, again, fully support your position, and that would be my position. I think I've said that from the beginning as well. My only concern is that, I think, don't we have today to put it on the ballot?
No, we have a meeting for next Tuesday. As well, and Town Council is actually going to
Okay, so we'll have that meeting. All right, so I thought tonight was the meeting. Because if, just playing this out, if it gets on the ballot, even if somebody decides to pass it over at town meeting, the ballot is the ballot. And then if people, if all of a sudden people go, "Oh, it's not going to do anything," and then it winds up passing,
Then you have to have another town meeting.
Impetus of people saying, "Well, of course, we don't have to allocate it, and you only have X amount of time to allocate it," which you can ignore. But I think there'll be a clamor of people saying, "Well, you got the money, so now we should do something." And that's my concern. And so I want to make sure we're all on the same, all of us are on the same page at least about that.
No, I understand that point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
I think for the public, the board is committed to putting a town meeting article and a ballot vote before the voters. I think that should proceed because that's what was told to the public. I think what is being presented is for the balanced budget article is the needs-based budget. That we've come to an agreement, and the school committee will vote tomorrow night on what the needs-based budget will be. And that will be what will be presented under the omnibus balanced budget article. The next article after that will be the difference between what the level service funded budget and the needs-based.
Minus Sser, the level service minus Sser.
Right.
I don't allow, I don't want to speak for the board, but we didn't take a vote on the ballot, which needs a vote. And therefore, I had conditions that I would approve it under that was not discussed. So I want it to be clear that I have not committed, me personally, I have not committed to put it on. I'm not against it, but I want to make sure that we're not going to put something on that even the school committee is not going to vote for either. So if we put something that there, have you voted on a final decision on the budget?
That's tomorrow.
Right.
See, this is all before, we have not done that.
Right. Because if the school committee, and I don't want to preempt their vote, but if it were, in the world of hypothetical, if they were to say, hey, the 5.4 budget would be the one they'd go with, and then therefore, who is there supporting the override?
Well, the 5.4 budget is what, as I agree with the town manager, is what goes into the omnibus budget, which makes a balanced budget. So we are set at town meeting, which was a concern. Our vote on the override was the level service budget minus Sser and the distance it took to the recommended budget at town meeting. So we voted to go with the override.
Okay, so that answers my
That is a definite vote, that we voted to go. We did vote to do that.
I think the gap is just going to be smaller.
Yes, it will be smaller. I didn't do the math yet, because the numbers keep changing. So I didn't do the math yet, but I think it will fall somewhere around 715 or 720,000, something like that.
That's not, this is, well, compared to Westford, it's small, but
Well, yes, compared to some other places, it is quite small, but it's still a lot of money. It's still a lot of money.
Eight million dollars. I see Groton's doing one, too.
Yeah, Groton's got like six. I mean, it's, and if anybody's interested, I'm happy to forward you the article from the Boston Globe from last Wednesday that talked about why all these school districts are in this mess.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, they said exactly what we said, only we've got maintenance on top of it. But the article stated the transportation, the upscale, the increasing cost of out-of-district placements, the health insurance Thank you, and utilities.
I'll sum it up with one, just a location. I think it's a Gold Dome building in Boston.
Oh, well, that is the major problem.
Yeah, the one on the hill.
That is the major problem right now. And they did leave a tiny, tiny shred of maybe they'll look at chapter 70. I'm not excited about it, though, because until they decide that holding communities harmless is in fact quite harmful, we are going to be stuck in this problem.
So I've actually been following Westford, been closely watching their meetings, too, because I don't have a life.
You don't have any meetings yet?
Yeah, no, not enough. I can't get my, not enough meetings. They also, interestingly, mentioned their trash contract. I guess they had some local guy doing it, and I think he's retiring or something. And so it's not just school, it's outside of school. They have a huge library project. I mean, there's just a lot.
A lot.
But you hear the same messaging, you hear the same issues. It's almost like, if you want to see a crystal ball, look at Westford, I feel like. I mean, I think they have a much bigger gap. But what I liked about it, they formed a budget task force in the spring of 2023 that looked at overall cross-the-town projects, places to gain efficiencies and everything. And they presented in October, and this is how they arrived at their override number. They actually proposed a higher number than they settled on because the number they initially proposed was never going to get by. I don't know if this one will. But they spent months, they spent the entire summer doing that. And it had, it was a nine-member committee. It had, I have it actually here. It included the select board chair, school committee, their case was a vice chair, superintendent, town manager, finance director from the schools, from the town, and a few residents. It was a nine-member committee, it was a lot of work. It's like a 9,500-page report. Really nice. I think that's a great roadmap. I'd love to see us, after May, look at forming a budget task force to look at this.
Did you say a 9,500-page?
95 to 800.
Oh, 95 to 800. That's a lot of work. I'm like, 9,500, yeah, can we boil that down to like 800?
I'm not signing up for that.
No, me neither. I thought I heard that, too.
Yeah, no, please.
I'm sitting right next to her, so like
But I think that would be, I'd really like to see us do that, because I think we're facing a number of issues on the horizon. I'd rather try to get ahead of it, be smart about it. People, you know, there's been comments about, "Why doesn't the town put a number forward? I haven't heard a number from the town for an override." I mean, where are we going to get that number now, in two months? I mean, that would be foolish. It should just, "Oh, I'm feeling, you know, maybe, what, 500,000?" Yeah, that sounds good.
We actually have a request.
Yeah. I have questions about that, too. But anyway, I do have, I thought I understood this, and now I'm confused again. The warrant article and the ballot, does it not, does an override not need to pass both? Doesn't it need to pass that town meeting?
It does, but if you pass, right, but if you, if the ballot, if the article fails, but the ballot passes, you can call a special town meeting, because it doesn't matter the order that they pass. So therefore, if the ballot passed, you could try again.
Try to pass an article again.
They're contingent, though, like the way
You need both of them.
Right, so if the town meeting article fails, it doesn't move forward.
I thought the ballot was moot.
It's still, it's moot.
Ballot question was moot, right?
It's still vote, it's still, voters still vote on it at the ballot, but they both have to pass for it, for an override to pass for a contingent move.
No, no, I know that, but I mean, in the same regard that, and we're going to have Town Council here, so maybe, if you had, if the warrant article passed and the ballot failed, you could call another special election for the same warrant article. I think the reverse is also true. If the warrant article fails, but the ballot passes, you could call a special town meeting to try to pass the warrant again. Within, you have a timeframe to do that. Both have to pass within a specific timeframe. That's the only, it doesn't matter if one fails or the other one doesn't. You have a chance to recall it, is my understanding.
And just keep doing it until
And people do.
And 5,000 for every special election?
The last one, I think, in Lunenburg that passed, which is in the early 90s,
92, I think.
I think they called, like, I think it took two, either two special town meetings or two ballots before they got it.
That's like another $10,000.
Well, yeah.
Good, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify something then. For the public and also for this board, I, in previous weeks, I do not believe that, the language that was used earlier, this board has committed to putting it on the warrant and on the ballot. I don't think that's true as a body. Members of this board enough to actually get it there have individually expressed, as individual members of this board, that they would strongly support putting it on the warrant and the ballot. But we have not taken a vote as a body.
And we did, however, acknowledge at our last meeting that we put a placeholder on the warrant.
Yes.
So we will, we will be looking to take that vote, but the hardship is that we need a number. So, you know, before, I believe we can vote to put it on the warrant, as far as formalizing the language, we need the school committee to meet, give us the number, and then next week when we meet, that we can do it. That's why we're calling next week's meeting, so that way we can formalize this. But right now, we do have the placeholder on the
So, Mr. Chair, getting back to the agenda item of ARPA, if it is appropriate, I would say that I am in favor and would make a motion
Please.
to such a degree that we would reallocate the 101,640 dollars previously designated for sidewalks to repurpose it to the school department, along with an additional 120,000 dollars of uncommitted ARPA funds to the school department for the purposes of the 911 emergency service item on their budget for the
Network security.
For the network security.
And Chromebooks.
And for a part of the, part of the Chromebook, so much as the remainder will allow.
Second. I think you may have beat me to that.
I actually didn't verbalize it. I not verbalized it, so.
We have a motion and a second. And again, this is reallocating ARPA funds to the school district. Any additional discussion, conversation on this? Okay, we're going to take, this could be a roll call vote. And I will ask whoever controls our back screen in the room, if we can pin Caesar to the screen, that'd be helpful. We're going to start with Sleckman Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Sleckman Emke.
Aye.
Sleckman Alonso.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for working with us to get this all figured out.
Appreciate that.
Thank you to you.
All right.
While we're on ARPA, not related to the schools, is there any update on the money allocated for the municipal building design? The engineering, architect and engineering costs?
No, we haven't gone out too bit on it yet. So it's, we had this conversation with the, with the school committee, not with the full school committee, but with Dr. Burnham and with the school committee chair, Carol Arshenbow, just to count out about where we're at. So the town manager in a previous meeting made a comment to this board that now is not, this is not a good year to go before the town to ask to borrow any money. And we were, leading up to the town manager making that statement a few weeks ago, we were kind of waiting to see where we were at with, is this a good year to go before the town asks to borrow some money? There's also another component to it, which is TC Passios. So as we all remember how we got into this, was looking, not how we got, but TC Passios was the start of kind of looking to repurpose that building. And as we did that analysis and we identified that the code requirements, meeting the new building code, that the code requirements alone were going to be 14 million dollars on TC Passios, and the total product was somewhere around 28, with inflation at the time, 28 to 30 million dollars, to move forward on the consolidation of town offices, school offices, and community uses. And the big hanging Chad, so to speak, was it didn't address this building at town hall, and it didn't address Ritter Building. So the pivoted approach was to prioritize Ritter Building to be the new school district offices, this building to become the meeting house, to do an annex onto Ritter Building to be the new town hall. And so the question then is, what does TC Passios become? And what we identified for uses is the gym that we need to maintain use of, the kitchen area for food pantry. PAC Studio was kind of the big glaring thing there, was a PAC Studio. And then the other thing was, those were kind of the major things. Now, do you need a 55,000 square foot building for that? No. And so part of the vision was you would tear down most of the building, you leave that first wing, and that that would satisfy those kinds of needs. The hardship is, there's a lot of cost associated with it. So there's a question to the school district of what is the plan with Turkey Hill? Because if they were going to be in the process of building a new school, Turkey Hill, given that the school district has already made investments in it, that if they continue to make investments into the roof, into the boiler system, that would be a building we could walk into similar to how we walked into TC Passios, but without any overarching huge, large cost. And that that building would then provide expansion potential for Boys and Girls Club, which we know they're interested in. which we know they're interested in. It provides all the things that we need to TC Passios to do, but it would be an entry into that building for closer, for a lower dollar amount. So the school committee this year, in part of the capital plan, they're asking for about two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars, if I recall, to do an analysis of Turkey Hill fully. And as they end that analysis, they're going to, my view, come to two kind of conclusions. One is minimal investment to keep the building going, and the second is investment to keep the building going for fifteen, twenty years, maybe there's three options, and third is build a new school. I think that all indications are, and we've looked into whether or not they can touch some of the state funds to make, you know, the windows have asbestos caulking and they're old and outdated, you know, can they touch state funds for those kind of building renovations? And the answer there is, if you do, you're locked into that building, or that money ties you to the life of the building or the life of that item. So if we then replace windows on the tax and the state pays for half of them, you know, if we leave that building for being a school, we will owe that money back. And so, you know, we were trying to finagle to see, is there a way to get the state to help pay for these building upgrades? So bottom line is, the plan for TC Passios is tied to the plan for Turkey Hill. That if we do not, if the school department, and then it's also budget capacity, that we need to keep whatever project we're doing really below twenty million and preferably close to fifteen million, so that way we don't box out the schools from what's going to be a costly renovation of Turkey Hill or a rebuild of a new school. And so those are kind of the limiting factors. So what the next phases and what this money needs to go to is visualize the plan for the buildings that we have. I think we didn't want to, we delayed a bit because the TC Passios piece, you know, we didn't want to really pay to visualize what that's gonna be if it's not really part of the plan. So the intent now is to move forward with, with these three buildings, building one being new but Ritter Town Hall, and then as the school wraps up their analysis of Turkey Hill, we will be in a better position to decide, is it a good time to move forward with Turkey Hill, being this community center with minimal need for renovation, or do we invest the money at TC Passios, or do we tear down TC Passios and potentially build a new school, build more athletic fields, et cetera? So the point is the conversations are tied together. So we're expecting that now that we are at this point, that we should be out to bid over the summer for this work, so we can be ready.
Okay, because it does have to be under contract by the end of this year, right?
Correct.
And do you think, is it still gonna, is that amount? It sounds like three schools are gonna be a part, I mean, three buildings are gonna be part of the architect and engineering costs? Will you think it'll be that high, two-hundred-twenty-five-thousand for three buildings?
So based on the analysis that we use, it's, in the state's system of schematic design and how much of a percentage of total project you need to contribute to it, yes. That we actually think it might be a little low. Any other questions on ARPA? Any other discussion on ARPA? Did I misstate anything in that one? Okay. Okay.
Looks like everything else is in progress, like bids are going out or something. Something's happening.
All right, so as we vote on recommendations, so on our agenda, we noted warrant articles and vote on recommendations. Excuse me. Let me pull to the town manager. So before we get into this, let me actually make an acknowledgement here. We received today an email, and I just need to, and I did forward it to the board because it came in this afternoon. Okay, so we received what is a, what was emailed over as a citizen's petition for the warrant, and the request was to add to the override, and I will, I will read the email that came through. It's not too lengthy. Dear Chairman Jeffries and members of the Select Board, I know that town warrants closed yesterday, but I hope you will, that, I hope you will allow the citizen's petition to fund several town departments through an override. Amount of two-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-and-five dollars in excess of the two-point-nine-four preliminary budget. DPW, an additional ninety-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Facilities, seventy-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars. Fire Department, twenty-eight-thousand. Library, twenty-four-thousand. Eagle House, twenty-thousand-twenty dollars, and Police, twenty-thousand. And this was received from Gene Russell, who submitted this individually but is a member of the Finance Committee. So I'm bringing this up now because I think that there, my view is that there's no action we can take, that there are some complications here. Number one is that this was not, we don't have signatures. This was not submitted to the town clerk on time. The timeline, even though we can set the dates, the timeline is set by bylaw, and we don't have the ability to waive it. So I think that with a request being late, it's not actionable. With a request being late, it's not actionable. I think that's probably the simplest bottom line here. And so I don't think we can actually act on this request. And I don't, and then in the absence of signatures, it's not a complete citizen's petition.
Am I right? Do I remember right? A citizen's petition requires ten signature, okay, ten citizens bring four, okay.
Yes.
Brittany.
I would concur with you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, okay. That was my sense of it when it came in.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I will get back to Jean. I did advise her that I was concerned that we were not going to be able to do any action on this because of the bylaw requirement and that we didn't have the ability to waive it, but I, you know, can't make that statement definitively until we are in agreement definitively. It's, you know, not in agreement that we cannot act on this request. Okay. Hearing no objections, we're all in agreement. So I'm gonna turn to the town manager for any updates to the articles that we have, if we have... You're sharing?
Yes, I'm sharing the document, so when at home you can see.
And let's just note the order as presented may not be the final order that happens.
Correct, and it has, the order has slightly changed, too, since the last, the last version. I inserted articles where I think they would typically belong, and natural progression, so. Article A is the, to hear regular written reports. It's always on the annual town meeting warrant. Article B is to vote to reauthorize the spending limits for revolving funds.
Any changes on these? Any changes on these?
No changes on those two. Article C, I highlighted in green because that's a new addition, that was mentioned tonight during the Conservation Commission Chair's report and discovery. When I reviewed the wetland bylaws in reference to a revolving fund, there exists no revolving fund in our revolving fund bylaw. So this would create the said revolving fund that's referenced in that, Chapter 138. The only thing that needs to be determined is a spending limit, and that I would work with the Conservation Commission on that spending limit, what they think is the maximum amount that would be annually. D is for the payment of prior year expenses, and that nothing has changed there. E is the current fiscal year budget, any amendments to the current fiscal year's budget. F is for the transfer of free cash of eighty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars for the network security upgrades, which after tonight's vote, I would think the board could reconsider and remove this article because the ARPA funding that was allocated for the network security upgrades would be covered.
So if we can just pause this, I think we're really speaking to, to Dr. Burnham and Ms. Arshinbo, that we have an article for the town to vote, raise, and appropriate and transfer from free cash, a sum of eighty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen...
We were just saying we should withdraw that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Should we consider it withdrawn, or do you need to formally meet to withdraw it?
Probably need to formally...
Okay.
Withdraw it tomorrow evening.
Okay, and for anyone who couldn't hear that on television, I was speaking with Ms. Arshinbo, this is related to Article F, as on the screen today, that they will likely amend their agenda to vote to repeal or withdraw this request. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Article G is for the fiscal twenty-five capital plan, to fund that plan. H is for the omnibus budget article, for a present-to-balance budget article. I is the draft language for an override, which would be the contingent amount for the difference between the...
Let's, can we pause here for a moment? In light of our conversation earlier, so that way we don't find ourselves in a position where if, if somehow one part of this passes and the other part does not pass, should we tie the two together by, by putting in a date? So in other words, I, upon the passage of the second half of the statement, contended upon the passage of a proposition two-and-a-half ballot question on, you know, the date of the actual election.
So this is a question for town council, but I will attempt to play town council surrogate. I think that it stated, Prop. Two-and-a-half is a state statute, and it gives all the deadlines and how this can be done there. So you, so long as what you are just saying doesn't supersede, which it sounds like it does, it sounds like what you're doing is superseding what the law says, I don't think you can do it.
All right.
So, but you can try. I mean, again, I certainly could be wrong, and Adam would be the...
And this is wording taken directly from the Division of Local Services manual on Proposition Two-and-a-half. Do you want me to read that aloud?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'll ask the question next week. Jay?
Okay. Jay relates to adding new, sorry, reclassifying positions. This was submitted by the Personnel Committee for positions for beginning in fiscal twenty-five.
Have we got, we haven't gotten their final report, have they?
No. No.
Okay.
K is for the funding of fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five related to the work that the Personnel Committee has been doing for, for market adjustments for positions within the salary administration plan. I is another article submitted by the Personnel Committee related to amending the definition of sick leave or use of sick time.
We have that as L.
I'm sorry?
We have that as L. You just said I.
Okay, sorry, L. M is the stabilization fund article, to deposit funds into the regular stabilization fund. N is to deposit funds into the special purpose stabilization fund. O is to deposit money into the OPEB trust fund. P is the sewer enterprise budget article. I'm sorry, the, and that should be fiscal twenty-five. Yeah, I just copied what they submitted, so that should be twenty-five. P, sorry, Q is to transfer thirty-five-thousand into the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund. R is to transfer fifteen-hundred into the sewer OPEB trust fund, which we have historically combined the two OPEB articles into one article. So it just will restate the amounts per what's coming from the sewer enterprise, and they are segregated separately, accounting-wise. S is for the fiscal twenty-five solid waste disposal program enterprise. T is for the water enterprise fund for fiscal twenty-five. U is for the public educational and government access, otherwise known as PEG or PAC, for fiscal twenty-five, their budget. V is for the sale of cemetery lots to appropriate ten-thousand dollars from that fund to be used for the care and improvement embellishment of town cemeteries. That's an annual article. W and X relate to the Board of Assessors. So it's, was brought to our attention that we should be voting every year on the personal exemptions, and so that would be defining that, and it would, they need to be the same percentage across the board for all those categories, per those exemptions. X would be the article that the assessors presented on last week relating to changing the age of the exemption as allowed under Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C, Clause 41(c), from seventy to sixty-five, I think it was mentioned sixty tonight, but it's sixty-five. So we're working on finding the original article and town meeting vote when it was originally adopted. Y is to re-adopt the OPEB trust fund statute. So in 2016, as part of the Municipal Modernization Act, they changed that statute, so towns would need to re-adopt the statute, and this would, was advised to comply with the legal requirements that are set out by the government accounting standards for creating a trust and a declaration of trust. So I included the IGR related to that in the Google Drive for the board. This is also something DLS is working on updating and being, going to be recommending policy updates, and this is something that came up, so we're doing this proactively because it's gonna be one of their recommendations, is that we do this.
I can say as twenty-fifth article, this, if this was any dryer, it would blow away in the game. You will quickly put people to sleep by Article Y. I realize the importance of it, but still.
I can't believe we're on AA coming out.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is not, twenty-eight, twenty-eight is great. Usually it's in the thirties.
Z is to codify the town meeting vote that was taken in 2008 for the historical commission and the composition, and put that into format of a bylaw, which should have been done after that town meeting vote. AA is from the Planning Board for, to amend code regarding battery energy storage systems. And the last article is regarding the water district article that was addressed at the special town meeting, and they're coming back with revisions to what's being presented.
Is this attempt three?
The water supply protection district.
This is water protection, water supply protection, part three.
Mm-hmm.
So to BB.
So hopefully there's some we can include in consent calendar to help...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to get the OPEB one.
Definitely gonna be a longer town meeting.
Let's get that OPEB one in there.
So the re-adoption one. If we can get a representative from the Planning Board to speak to the Planning Board article, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be wise for us to go through this tonight and make recommendations. I think we should save this for next meeting and the meeting after.
But what I would, what I would encourage, at least at this meeting, Mr. Chair, or encourage the Planning Board Chair, which I'm probably pretty sure he's already going to do, that water supply protection district was the subject of a lot of conversation. It would be really helpful to advertise that either here or for their meeting, so that people can, the people who have the questions can ask them then, not on town meeting floor, because that took a lot of time last time, and there were a lot of nuances that people couldn't answer.
They do have their hearing. Yes, Monday.
Night of caucus. Their public hearing.
Same time as the caucus.
Yeah, because their last meeting didn't happen because there was a Zoom link issue or something, so their last meeting, scheduled meeting didn't happen.
So, I mean, in the past, I think we've kind of gone both ways of moving to accept all the articles that were down the warrant. Sometimes we don't. How do you guys want to proceed? Do we need to formally accept all these?
I'm fine with accepting all of them. I mean, we're gonna hear from the school committee whether they're, the network article will be rescinded or... the network article will be rescinded or not.
Alright. So we have them? Okay.
And obviously there's going to be wording changes in some of them. Town Council will still need to do final review. That will be brought to, back to the board at that point.
Okay.
Question, uh, with regard to Article X. Uh, when we had the, uh, uh, Board of Assessors in here last week, uh, option zero was to do nothing. Option one was to do what is now in Article X. Option two was to increase the, uh, exemption from seven hundred and fifty to one thousand dollars. And option three was to do both options one and options two. At that point, at that meeting, I had said, we decide the question that's before us, which was whether or not we would put this on there. But that you, I, I said in dicta, which are, you know, basically is, is a side thing, that you would have easily had my support to do option three, which was to do both, to, to do, to drop it. And I believe you kind of, eh, kind of, um, concurred with that sentiment. I forget if Ms. Emptey did or not. Uh.
I didn't comment, yeah.
You say again?
I didn't comment.
Okay, okay. So I, I don't want to attribute anything. I mean, if we're deciding only the question that's before us, then yes, we just decide on that and we decide whether or not this goes on the warrant. I just kind of wanted to throw it out there again that I certainly would have been in support of doing both. But they may not want it that way too, because that may just take the, uh, the Board of Assessors.
Well, I don't think they would have offered it if they didn't want to do it.
No, no, no. Well, I, they may not actually want it, the, what they, no, they actually did say this is what they want. This is what they want to go on the warrant.
Okay.
I don't know if that was out of concern that if they tried to do both in one bite, it, the whole thing would tank. I'm just throwing it out there to see if, you know, for, for, for discussion, see what the, you know, blasting it out to them too, to see what, what their inclinations are. But for tonight, I guess we decide only what is before us.
My opinion is, um, if anyone who submitted an article, I mean, wants to revise what they've submitted, I mean, they have time. Um, not a lot of time, but they have like a week. So, I mean, this one was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It probably sort of come from the Council of Aging. Um, but if the Board of Assessors meets and they submit a revision to X, uh, I mean, I, I don't think historically, we don't, we don't, that's not a conflictual.
Yeah.
As long as it's not, you know, substantially different.
And that's basically why I'm just putting a full, putting a, putting a circle around it, basically. Just if they, you know, they're going to list, they're going to follow this or listen to this meeting or.
But I don't think we have a pattern of amending other people's submitting.
No, I agree with you.
Fair enough.
Yep.
But for the record, Mr. Chair, I would like to say that I support Mr. Franco's assertion that I would also support the both option.
Yep. As, as do I.
Now, also just mechanically, I do want to ask if, if there is a concern that if both of those were combined in the same article, that the entire article would tank, can, is it too late at this point for like an Article X A or X one to include that, that provision, that the, uh, that the, uh, amount be raised from seven fifty to one thousand? Or must it now be piggybacked onto a single article that includes?
I think we can ask town council a question next week. My assumption is, um, it's, it, it needs to be in the same article.
What, what I, what I would argue, yeah, first of all, I wouldn't add it and I don't think you need to. If we want to expand it to go to both, you could certainly listen to the comments and you can certainly amend away.
Correct.
Their, the addition of the exemption, the increase. But you can't add it because it will increase the amount in the article. So it would be better to have it in and be able to remove it because you won't be able to add it on town meeting floor because it would add money.
So at the Council of Aging, I mean, you know, we have to sign off on all this stuff by April the second. So if the Council of Aging and this, and the, the article was submitted by the Board of Assessors, the revision, I would assume, needs to come from the Board of Assessors. But the Board of Assessors and Council of Aging are able to submit a revision by April the second that reflects, I think, what a majority of this board has expressed an interest in recommending approval of, then, uh, that is welcome and encouraged. Is that a summary of what you were getting at?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that, that, I just wanted to put it out there and just figure out how it gets properly.
Yep.
Platformed.
Okay. Any other discussion on budget, capital, warrant articles? Alright, um, I am far too tired to really have any substantive discussion tonight. Want anything else? Um, uh, it's not about me, but if the board wants to do, have substantive discussion on environmental policies and bylaws, you're welcome to. Uh, I will sit here. Uh, upcoming vacancies of boards and committees for fiscal year twenty-five, this is something we do have to do today. So as per our policy, and, uh, I don't, I'm just looking to see if it's in this week's, yes. So as per our policy, uh, this needs to go out, uh, and get, and get noted. So it's just, we're being informed that the appointments, vacancies this year, uh, we have one member on the Agricultural Commission, two members on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, four members on the Conservation Commission, three members on the Council of Aging, three members on the Cultural Council, one member on the Finance Committee, uh, two members and a, and one associate on the Green Communities Committee, two members on the Historical Commission, two members on the Personnel Committee, and two members on the Public Access Cable Committee. So these vacancies are going to be published and posted for anyone from the public to apply to. Uh, there will also be, um, communications sent out to any members who are currently sitting in these seats to ask them to submit an application to apply or reapply to them. Uh, there's a whole process that our current, um, um, policy change outlines is going to happen. And then the appointments themselves happen typically in June and the first couple of meetings in June. So, anyone interested in joining up to these, please go to the town website, uh, take a look at the volunteer application form, uh, and please be sure to submit these. I think the deadline is the end of April, uh, end of May if I'm correct. I have to double check, but I think it's May twenty-fifth.
I'm interested, Mr. Chair, because, I mean, most of our committees are set so that the membership expires on an equal number per year and most of them are three-year, uh, I mean, with the exception of Planning Board, that's elected. Uh, so I don't see ZBA on here. Like, is nobody from the ZBA up this year, for instance? That's an appointed committee.
Yep.
I mean, that seems odd.
I think we're missing a couple of things. I, I'm questioning why we have four members on conservation coming.
Yeah, that's another one since, yeah, exactly. That's another one, why, how that got to be on that cycle with four.
So if we can, um, if we can, I know, uh, if we can ask Annie to take another look at this list, um, and then clarify, especially on the conservation, um, and we always have someone from ZBA.
There's only two on conservation.
One would think, four.
Well, not if you look at the website.
Well, that's what I mean. So just, just mind.
Yeah.
Right.
There's two listed on the website.
Yeah, so.
Historical at some point got off cycle because.
So there's only two here.
Right, but there's, um, there were no positions for twenty-five. They should have been all staggered, one, two, and three terms.
Right.
They were all twenty-four and twenty-six.
Wow. We have a tough time following rules though. Okay, we should, at some point, we should get these in the right cadence.
So we have the list, um, and I think the request is, uh, is just to take another look at this and for us to discuss it again. Alright. Okay. Vote required regarding early in-person voting. Alright, so I'll go ahead and read this, um, and this is, uh, communication received and we're taking, uh, I'm recommending that we take an action on this tonight. Uh, so I'll just go ahead and read the correspondence. This is to the Select Board from the Board of Registars of, uh, Voters and regarding early in-person voting for local elections. I don't know to the clerk if you have this available to read, if you want to read it or I can read it.
Yeah, I'll read it. I have it up.
Got it.
I'll leave off, um, I'll continue where you left off. So in accordance with the Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two and effective June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, it is required that the Select Board vote upon a recommendation from the Board of Registars for in-person or early voting options for the local annual town election. Changes to early voting by mail and in-person early voting. According to Section twenty-five B, A one of the Votes Act, early voting by mail is not required for all local elections and preliminaries unless the town opts out. In order to opt out of early voting by mail for a local election, the Select Board must hold a public hearing and public roll call vote to not allow early vote by mail no later than forty-five days before the date of the election. According to Section twenty-five C one for local elections, towns may choose to have in-person early voting. To opt in to in-person early voting for municipal elections, at least two registrars need to recommend it. And the Select Board must then vote to authorize in-person early voting no later than five days before early voting would begin. It must include the early voting schedule. A separate vote does need to happen in advance of each municipal election and a blanket vote for all future municipal elections is not acceptable. A meeting of the Board of Registars was held today, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and following discussion, it was unanimously voted to recommend to the Select Board not to hold in-person early voting for local elections. In addition, be advised that the Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two requires that early vote by mail is mandatory for local elections unless the Select Board holds a public hearing no later than forty-five days, April third, two thousand and twenty-four, prior to the annual town election and vote to opt out of early vote by May. Um, shared this last part?
Please.
Alright, Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Shirley McBride made a motion to recommend to the Select Board to opt out of early voting by May. Ruth Anderson seconded it. None of the registrars recommend having early in-person voting. Absentee voting in the office is available during regular office hours, nine to noon on Friday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
There is a typo in this.
Oh, there are several.
Yeah, well, one, one kind of important one. It doesn't says, uh, Shirley McBride made a motion to recommend to the Select Board to opt of early voting. Doesn't, they left the o- out.
Out, to opt out of.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, Selectman Nuzzolo for reading, Nuzzolo for reading that. Let's kind of backwards this, um.
Yeah, I was going to say, so after that reading, I have to say that I'm less certain about how this works than before it was read. So I have no idea what this says, especially with the typos and, and everything, so.
Alright, so if the elections are held on the eighteenth and thirty days before that is the eight, so we have to act on this by roughly the s- our meeting in April the second. So we need to, we need to call a public hearing, uh, on the second of April in order to be able to act on this request based on what I just read. And, and I understand it to be, well, let's just kind of figure out, do we want to call a public hearing? The request is for us to call a public hearing to, um, not allow in-person voting, basically.
Early voting.
Early voting. In-person, in-person.
By mail or in-person? Early voting, right?
So let's look at the first chapter, according, the, the first paragraph, twen- Section twenty-five B. It says, early mo- voting by mail is not required for all local elections and preliminaries. I'm, I'm assuming they mean primaries. Unless the town, see, and I'm not sure, why would the town have to opt out if it's not required? So I have a funny hunch, it is required unless the town opts out.
Okay.
Doesn't that make sense?
Yep.
I think that, that's a very big problem.
Is anyone by chance on Zoom or otherwise at home listening from the Board of Registars? Uh, excuse me, the Board of Registars of Voters who can speak to this?
Let, let me ask Mr. Chair, before you ask, I mean, d- does this have to pass tonight?
No, that's always backwards plan, yeah, April second.
I think, I think, I think we should put this till next week because we're going to need to get clarification because there's too many questions I have. I mean, I'm generally pretty good at reading this stuff. But this one is very difficult and I'm not sure that it's correct.
Yeah, I read, I read this thing three times at home and I, I'm glad you guys thought it was a mess too.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't say it's a mess. I would just say that there's a couple of errors.
How far in advance we have to post the public hearing notice? So if we want a public hearing on April second?
We would need to, um, generally have to post it tomorrow, I think. Isn't it two weeks?
Uh, well, it, sometimes it depends on the statute.
Wait, yeah, but, but.
But reasonable.
So we can't wait till next week to post because we would have to have the public hearing on the second.
So, well.
That's if we want to opt out. See, that last paragraph, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Can't we cancel a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, of course.
Can we, so we're better off posting a public hearing now?
Correct.
Yeah.
Off, that's fine, I'm fine. Yep.
Yep. I would advise that we post a public hearing, we get some clarification and we discuss it.
Yeah.
Um, next week or at the public hearing. I don't think this is actionable.
April second.
I agree.
No, it's confusing.
That last paragraph before they made the motion says, in addition, be advised that the Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two requires that early vote by mail is mandatory for local elections unless the Select Board holds a public hearing, not later than that, and votes to opt out of early vote by mail, which directly contradicts what that italicized first paragraph says, which is, says, it's not required. So, yes, quite the contradiction.
Yep. Sometimes mistakes happen, so we just need clarity.
Vote in person.
Alright, so not actionable, uh, on that request, but we will post the public hearing and, um, okay. We are going to minutes warrants action items. Mr. Alonso, if I may ask.
Yes.
Uh, we've received a request, uh, for the, are you smarter than a, is it sixth grader?
Yeah.
Um, what's the date on that?
Oh, boy.
So the, while we're, while you're pulling up, so the request is for the Select, last year, the Select Board, um, opted into, are you smarter than a sixth grader? It was a lot of fun.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Alonso, are you hosting this year?
I am.
Okay.
Tenth year, tenth anniversary.
Wow, so Mr. Alonso will be hosting. The member, the teams are, teams are four if I'm correct, right?
Uh, yes, up to four.
Okay, so the question is.
Actually, actually, they usually want three.
Okay.
So, but I, I can get that clarified.
Alright, so do, once we get this date, my next question for the board is, are we going to volunteer? I had so much fun doing this last year, so I highly recommend it. I see.
It is Friday, April twenty-sixth.
Alright, which is the day after my birthday. Alright, I will still make it because it's exciting. Alright, so do we have at least three board members that are interested in me RSVPing and saying that we're going to do this? I see Caesar, me, Renee.
Lou, could you?
Okay, perfect.
It's your swan song.
Yeah, you're.
Not your swan song, life swan song.
I won't be, I'll be out of town. I'll be out of the country, actually.
That's how, that's how it'll go.
Yeah.
You'll be out of town?
I'll be out of the country on the twenty-sixth.
Alright, so.
That week.
You said three people.
April, you said, right?
Three or four.
Alright, so we have three. What was that?
I, 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 I'm, subject to availability, yes, I'm in, so.
What is this, what is this, a limited time offer? Subject to availability.
Usually I'm trying to plan stuff like two months out, you guys like, that's too far out.
You know how much I'm going to miss those kind of statements that you make when you do stuff like that?
Alright.
But wait, there's more.
Alright, so, um, we have s- some warrants. Let's go through the warrants. And while we're doing warrants, I think we only have one big warrant. Okay, so I'm going to make a request, um, to our new finance person. So when we get the warrants, if we can, I really appreciate the stickies, um, the sticky notes that come on them usually, um, that just kind of clarify some of this stuff. But anyway, alright, first is an accounts that just, excuse me. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. And, uh, to the town manager, this is two weeks in a row we're signing warrants, um, and usually we do them every other week.
No, we've been doing them every week for a while.
Okay. Okay.
For, we used to do them every two weeks, but we got into a cycle to do them every week to make sure we weren't missing any invoices as, yeah.
So that was my clarification is, is, should we expect this to?
Continue. Um, that would be a discussion I'd want to have with finance director and departments to make sure that everything is getting processed in our family fashion.
I can see the changing of the guard already in the finance director is that he, he signs them digitally, even though he's in there in person printing them. even though he's in there in person printing them, he signs them digitally, which I think is hysterical.
Today, he was actually at a conference.
Oh, he was, okay, all right, sorry, Ezekiel.
All right, do we have any action items for the town manager? Hearing non-committee reports? Any committee reports this evening?
There was a board assessors last night that I got to help them deliver their laptop, but I have not seen the recording because.
Thank you, thank you.
And FinCom hears from, well, actually, they hear from school on, what? School on Thursday? Oh, you're gonna answer? Okay. I'm gonna defer to the FinCom committee member when he comes up for public comment.
School committee meets tomorrow night.
I think I'm called off. I don't have any.
Can I take breakfast?
All right, so the Select Board will be meeting, special meeting on March the 26th for 7:00 PM. We're gonna have a very limited agenda, just to kind of, again, discuss the override and warrants. And then I do want to ask the Board, as we look at our calendars for the month of April, the week of April the 16th, so the meeting we have naturally scheduled on April the 16th, I think it may be a good idea for us to not meet on April the 16th and to put a placeholder in for April the 30th, as that leads into town meeting. So it's school vacation week. So any objections to that of planning to not meet on April the 16th and then putting a hold on?
Hold, you don't want to meet because it's?
The town manager is also taking vacation.
Ah, okay, now I got, now I got it.
Is there a meeting April 23rd?
Who's meeting?
Do we have a meeting scheduled for the 23rd?
We do.
Okay, I won't be here that week.
Okay. Yeah, I know, you and I.
It's my birthday.
She wants to avoid your birthday, she wants to avoid any, any fun.
I didn't say anything about that tech.
April 23rd is? It's William Shakespeare's birthday.
Yeah, I know.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing, I'm guessing a different year, though. You're keeping yourself really well.
Preserved.
All right.
I believe 1564, if I'm not mistaken, but that, don't quote me on that one.
Okay, so.
You have to go.
Fifty, sixty-four, what? All right, so, so tentatively, I hope you're not here on your birthday. I hope you.
I'll be here.
All right, so we're gonna tentatively, so just upcoming meeting schedule, next week, the 26th, we're meeting at 7:00 PM to finalize the language for the override warrant article and for the ballot. And then we'll have by that point the number back from the school committee. And then we are meeting in April 2nd, 9th, we're skipping the 16th, 23rd, and a hold on the 30th. All right, and I did note that Selectman M. Key mentioned she will be unavailable on the 23rd. Is anyone else going to be unavailable at any of these upcoming meetings?
The, the first one, what is it, the 8th or the 9th?
April 2nd.
What?
2nd.
The April, the first Tuesday in April.
2nd.
2nd.
Oh, no, so it's the 9th. It's the one after the eclipse because I'll be going away. So I may be getting back in time. I don't know exactly what hour, so it's questionable.
Okay. All right, okay.
The other thing for next week is the clarification on that early voting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. All right, any other, we're down to public comments. Public comments from the town manager.
I have none tonight.
Public comments from the public. Let's start with Mr. Passios. Then we're calling, then we're calling Mandy.
As I fall across the floor. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, first announcement, this is a public service announcement, as I am one of the members of the Finance Committee. Wednesday, tomorrow evening, we are going to hear from Monty Tech Sewer Department and Unclassified and Debt Service. On Thursday, we have PAC, School Department, and Other Moneyed Articles. So those are the three appointments each night, kind of backed up against the public hearing on the 28th, so we had to get them all done this week. Okay, taking off the Finance Committee hat, I've gotten a couple of text messages since our previous discussion during the non-appointed hearing, and I will be over the next week or so doing some more research above and beyond what Mr. Alonso has already done in the history of the formation of the Historic Commission. I'll leave it at that because there's, I'm gonna have to look back at the dates that he already looked at. The other thing that would help me is if somebody could send me a copy of the proposed article that's going into the warrant.
It's actually, and it's already in the Finance Committee drive.
You can have that anyway.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Mandy, good to see you.
Hello, everyone. Amanda Gilman, 186 Reservoir Road. I readily admit I did not listen to the meeting tonight. I have two little kids. I have a husband who is at baseball try, baseball draft tonight. He helps run the softball and baseball league in town, so I had to put my kids to bed. But I just wanted to come up here and reiterate that there is a group of us that are working really, really hard in support of an override. I feel as though this board committed to us that they are going to file an override petition publicly, and I just want to make sure that publicly we are still here, and I know we don't have a formal role in the town government, but, you know, we've been meeting. I've spent the last week of my life on this, and we have a public meeting. We are planning next Wednesday night at 7:00 o'clock at the library. We have reserved a room. We're called Save Our Schools Lunenburg, and anyone who'd like to come and learn how to volunteer can join us. So I don't want to comment because I don't know enough about what you guys talked about, and I will watch the meeting tomorrow, but I was sitting on my couch, and I think it's important enough for you guys to know that I am very, very passionate about this. I changed out of my pajamas to come here and make sure that I didn't look like a total wreck, to say. I have heard from a few people, there was a lot of discussion about whether you guys voted on an override and also, you know, including an override petition and the numbers, and I understand the school committee is going to be meeting tomorrow night as well, but I just felt the need that I had to come up here and make sure that we were seen, that we're here, and there's a lot of us who really want to do this. And I know that there was some discussion of Westford and other towns. I'm not necessarily against that, but I fear the longer we let this stuff sit out there, the less chance we do actually have of passing it. I used to work in the state legislature. You can say good things or bad things about it. They don't let bills sit out there for a year before they vote on them because there's a lot more time to pull, pull stuff apart. In 2012, we voted override down two to one in this town because the school department asked for $1.2 million. The town added on an extra $1.2 million, and we lost two to one. I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider that if other town departments need it, but I think politically, waiting and adding a ton of money to it is not necessarily a win. I worry that that's actually a real loss, so, and, you know, my kid isn't gonna go to fourth grade again. So if next year he's in fourth grade and he doesn't get a music teacher because, you know, we don't pay for it or we don't get to it, that's, that will be a shame. So I hope you understand my passion. I respect that you all are putting a lot of work into this, and I don't ever want to come off as disrespectful in that sense, but I just feel really intensely about this, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mandy. I know you missed, it sounds like from your comments that you, you sound like you didn't watch, but you got.
No, no, I told you, I readily admit I didn't watch the meeting. I, I have two little kids, they're six and eight. My six-year-old will not go to bed without me or my husband laying with him for an hour, and so Matt had to go, has committed to coaching soft, two basketball teams and helps run the, you know, the baseball league in town. So we've never been involved in town government, but we do do a lot here, so I don't want to ever feel like just because I'm not here at the meetings doesn't mean that I'm not invested in this town, so.
Yeah, no, we had some, we did have some conversations earlier, and I, I think the point was that we haven't formally voted on the override or the ballot, but you do have, as Mr. Franco identified, a majority of the Board has committed to doing this, and we are calling a meeting next week specifically to work out what this language for the ballot and the warrant article will be.
Excellent.
And we will have town council with us.
Yeah, I convinced a group of people not to file a, I just want a citizens petition. That was me. I convinced the people not to vote, not to file a citizens petition because I have faith in you guys that you're gonna do this for us.
The warrant article is on because we just decided, we just had a question if anybody had any objections. So the warrant article is on.
I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be.
And you're not.
Okay, I just, I felt really passionately about coming up here and you seeing me that I'm here, just because I didn't listen to the whole meeting, like.
No, we get it.
Ballot question requires an official vote, and we just said that we didn't take an official vote.
Okay.
And therefore, individual members had committed or not committed or committed with, with asterisk, but we hadn't voted. That's what we said.
Excellent. So I'm glad it's 10:00, so hopefully, nobody will watch this crazy speech that I do. And also, for any of you who know my, my uncle Dan Proctor, he has a history of watching meetings at home and then running up here and speaking. So I can't wait to tell him tomorrow that I have followed in his footsteps.
There are a handful of people, and he is one of them, and there are others in town I could mention, and I'm not gonna mention my name, who also come quickly.
I'm sure I'm not the only person. I'm sorry that I'm.
Mandy, I didn't, I don't think I knew that you were cousins with Jim Latanzi.
I am, yeah, well, related, yeah, we're kind of.
I, I just want to add two things if I could. One thing is that we are, the one reason we are not, have not taken a formal vote yet is because we're waiting for the thing to crystallize so that we actually are taking a vote on something, not just writing a blank check and saying, hey, we're gonna do an override, or we want to do an override. The second thing is, not only do I see you here, but I check about every 30 minutes to see if there are any new comments in concerned citizens of Lunenburg. So, all right, you know, and that's at like 2:00 in the morning I do that, too, so.
People who know me are texting me.
I should just add.
They said, okay, you're doing fine, so that's good.
If you're gonna be for something, show some passion.
Yeah.
That's what I just ask of you, that's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that from you.
I think you checked that box.
I mean, my husband is like, how much time are you gonna spend on this override? And I'm like, as much time as it takes. He's, he's really, he's really loving it. I'm just kidding, he's great.
Thank you, Mandy.
I appreciate all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rabbit?
Now, I think I know why he's here.
Oh, I think so, I think, I think I know, too.
Didn't even get a chance to change out into his pajamas.
I'm saying I have a text I didn't respond to.
I gotta get down there.
Okay, 41C again. Okay, just, there's a lot of things that have been moving even today. Okay, when we first proposed this, we looked at what, what could we do? And with regard to changing the age, there was no problem. With regard to asking for additional funds, taking it up to the $500 plus state contribution, it was well within the 100% increase. We went ahead with it. Our Rena came up and says, you best check that out yesterday, last night when we were at a meeting. Today, we had a conference call with Rena, myself, and the DOR, Becky, however you say her last name, and we got a clarification with regard to that, and that is essentially, we're still well within the limits. We are not over the 100%. We are fine to move ahead with both options if we so chose. Last night, because we didn't know, you know, we're sensitive, we're very, very sensitive to the money situation with regard to the override and things, hence, that's why we came forward and we provided you with the lowest cost option that was gonna affect the most non-people. We thought we could get that, and that's, and Tom, I didn't know you used the reference of a cup, cup of coffee before that, but I, I didn't know that, so anyway.
You saw us all laughing.
Yeah, so that was good, thank you very much. It's a good, good analogy, so anyway.
Did you do it?
He did.
I did.
Why doesn't that surprise?
I didn't know that.
A third of a cup of coffee.
We're half a cup of coffee.
No, a quarter.
Two meetings away from me saying, just two meetings away from me saying it.
I know.
At least one groan.
But now we're up to a whole cup of coffee from somebody of the whole town. So the other, so once we went through it in the meeting last night, we had a discussion with regard to, well, we don't know what's gonna happen. We know it could be mended in the next week, so it wasn't locked in, and that, for that matter, we weren't really sure why you guys, how it voted. I, I don't know if there was really a vote in, in making the decision. So that was hence my question to you, Mr. Chairman, was that had we voted. We came back and we said, let's now take the position, we're gonna ask for both elements within the 41C. And if you make a decision to decide not to fund the, that portion, at least do the age. But again, clarifying, right now, we can do both.
Okay, so I think, I'm guessing you heard us commenting on this at home, and rather than calling in, you saw, I'm gonna get in the car and drive there, but.
This is too good.
So I, I think you guys, I think it would be beneficial if the Board of Assessors who submitted the article formally submits a revision
Okay, and then we talked about that as well.
The changes you talked about, and to make sure you do it before our meeting on April the 2nd.
Right, there, yeah, and I just wanted to make sure you knew. Oh, by the way, I forgot to do something. I knew it was at the three minutes. We need a replacement.
You weren't at three minutes. At that point, you were probably at the six-minute mark.
Six minute, yeah, so I stopped, I stopped. It broke my heart to do that, you know, it really did. So anyway, yeah, we need a replacement for Sarah, who's gonna be leaving, and, and she's super. We hope we can find a candidate as good as she. And so I don't know how we can get out there and push any harder, but that's what we're gonna be trying to do and at the same time at the conference, we're gonna just keep talking it up. But yes, we need somebody that we can vote for. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lou, for really getting me fired up.
Well, I mean, it only took you about six minutes to get here after I spoke, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rabbit. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public on Zoom? Seeing none. Any public comments from the Board this evening? Public comments from the Board?
I, if I could, I'll, I just want to say that it's kind of fortuitous that these two items were juxtaposed right here, one after the other, because not only would I have been in support of both options anyway, just because I've, that's been a big thing for me, senior tax relief, so. But I'm especially mindful of it in light of a potential override going through because we have to make sure that if an override does go through, that the most vulnerable people aren't crushed even more by it. So those two things are, this is the thing, when you're, when you're on the Select Board, I mean, you, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of balls being juggled in the air, and then none of them can be, can, many of them can't be considered in isolation. You pull one lever, it throws the other planets out of orbit. You have to, you just have to be thinking of all of this stuff.
My only public comment is the caucus again next Monday, 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium.
Thank you. We do have an open seat on this Board.
It's not open yet, don't get excited.
Change, change of heart?
We have a seat that will be open on this Board, and so there is a Select Board seat available, and the incumbent is not seeking reelection. All right, I think that concludes our meeting tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? It's gonna be a roll call. Vote, Selectman Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Selectman M. Key.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Again, the Select Board will be meeting 7:00 PM next Tuesday for an abbreviated and targeted meeting, and then we will resume our regular meeting schedule on April the 2nd with a pause as noted on April the 16th. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.